Okay. Lynda's amazing, isn't she folks? Good job.
She just fixed one and it fixed magically. Love that. I love that. Okay. No problem. Thank you. All right. Bye.
Is it working?
Yes, it is. This is pretty amazing. A lot of people here, very, very inspired. My name is Stephanie Denia. I am the wife of William Denia. Most of you know William as the Bation Lake President. Bation Lake Association President. This presentation is Wake Surfing on Bation Lake. Big waves, big problems. For all of you that don't know, Wake, what is a Wake Enhancement? Designed to create large, high-energy waves. Tanks at the back of these boats take on thousands of pounds of water to increase their weight, causes them to ride bow, up and stern down and throw huge waves. It deploys special fins to maximize height and shape and powerful motors pointing their propeller at a downward angle producing high-energy wakes and prop wash. Allows for people to surf untethered behind them. These waves are larger and more powerful than those created by other watercraft of similar size and shape. The environmental impact. Just one pass of a wake boat can be devastating to the ecosystem. Multiple passes in the same area cause long-lasting damage to shorelines, water quality and lake bottoms. It erodes shorelines when the distance to shore is not adequate to dissipate the wakes. It destroys waterfowl nesting, damages fish spawning areas. The propeller angled downwards and under the boat directs a propulsion of prop wash scouring the lakebed 20 feet deep. Scouring of the lakebed causes algae blooms, murky waters, imperils aquatic plants, insects, fish and microscopic life. Increased turbidity causes an increase in water temperature, making the ecosystem less hospitable for native flora and fauna. Native plants are uprooted and fish nets are destroyed. This was just a picture of the different issues that occur. I don't have my cheaters on, so forgive me. A water surfing's boat waves takes the length of almost 1.5 football fields to dissipate and match the force of an average boat's wave when it hits the shore. Excessive boat waves can cause shoreline erosion, increasing sediment and therefore phosphorus, which degrades water quality and increases algae bloom. Wake surf in 40 feet of water or more, wake surfing in shallower than recommended depths disturbs the lake bottom, which increases phosphorus levels that degrade water quality. Waiting at least five days before entering, and it says Green Lake, but I adopted it from Green Lake, it's Bation Lake. If your boat was in another lake. Currently, the ballast system on wake boats is not designed to be fully drained, leaving five gallons of water on average in the tanks. This presents a threat of introducing new aquatic invasive species to Bation Lake and degrading ecosystem health. If your wake boat was recently in another lake, wait five days before entering Bation Lake. So again, this is just kind of a recap of it, spreading of invasions invasive species. Wake boats use large, I'm sorry, wake boats use lake water as ballast. It must be pumped out each time the boat leaves, but several gallons are always retained in the tank. That is due to design of the ballast compartments and they are also difficult to clean. Thus, the ballast water mixes with the water of the previous bodies of water used to wake board. This causes the potential to spread aquatic invasive species, which can survive for several days in just a few drops of water inside a ballast tank. Now, I don't know about you folks, but that was very surprising to me, who has looked at this as well. Safety hazards, you have safety hazards to swimmers, paddleboarders, canoeers, kayakers, sailboats, fishermen, people resting and sitting while mooring their boats, swim rafts, docks knocking over small children and the elderly slamming into walls along the shoreline, and you'll hear from many of them tonight. Just a few pictures. Lake Warhamog Study. Lake Warhamog is 656 acres. The last count, 45 wake enhancement surf boats. Currently, in the ordinance process, they did perform a study this year. It showed disturbances from the propeller downwash at a depth of 26 feet below. I just want to try to play this, so.
Lake Warhamog and the surrounding communities in partnership with Terra Vigilis Environmental Services have completed an in-lake study including propeller downwash, wave propagation and wave impacts along the shoreline. Science-based studies utilizing aerial, surface and subsurface videography visually capture and show the impact of wave-enhancing boat activities to lake shorelines, lake bottoms and water quality. What you see is a sequence of synchronized events demonstrating wave propagation from various camera angles, including aerial views and surface perspectives of the lake. In this video composite, we see a wakeboard boat in the upper-left at 500 feet from the shoreline. In the lower-right, we see a ski boat traveling past the dock at 100 feet from the shoreline. Both boats significantly impact both the dock and the shoreline. This side-by-side comparison clearly illustrates that a greater distance than 500 feet is necessary to achieve the same wave height and energy produced by other vessels passing the dock at 100 feet from the shoreline. In addition to wave propagation, wakeboard boats also produce subsurface effects. Here, a wakeboard boat in surf mode passes by a buoy which is attached to a system of cameras placed at different depths below the surface of the lake. This sequence of synchronized events demonstrates wave energy at different depths below the lake's surface. As we focus on each view, the movement of the streamers along the vertical pole becomes visible as the wakeboard boat passes overhead. At a depth of 26 feet below the surface, the energy from the propeller downwash causes sediment to be redistributed over the attached brick. Wakeboard boats that throttle up at the buoy generate an even deeper and more powerful propeller downwash. The propeller downwash from other vessels do not impact streamers less than 10 feet from the surface as the prop wash is horizontal. In this view, a wakeboard boat in surf mode passes by the delta. The boat generates a wave that has a substantial impact on the delta. In this synchronized, four quadrant view, we observe a sequence of various perspectives as the wakeboard boat moves past the delta. As the waves reach the delta, the scrubbing and movement occurring above and beneath the surface disturb the sediment, reintroducing both nutrients and toxins into the water column. Whether it is implemented as guidelines or ordinances, lakes need to do what is best for their lake and the community that uses it.
Whoops. Where am I? Did not go back. Okay. So, I also wanted to put up a comparison of Bation Lake and Candlewood Lake. Candlewood Lake is much larger, as you can see, it's 5,420 acres with an average depth of 40 feet, while Bation is only 273 acres with an average depth of 15 to 17 feet. What is being done so far? So, the towns of Kent, Washington and Warren are currently working to adopt an ordinance prohibiting wakeboard operation on Lake Warhamog, which you just saw. Lake, and forgive me, I can't say these words, Bungie in Woodstock, Connecticut is already banned wake enhancements. Several lakes in other states have developed ordinances prohibiting wakeboard operations. Alabama is actually the first state for the entire state that it's banned. California, Indiana, Illinois, New Hampshire, Oregon, Virginia and South Carolina are also implementing some of these ordinances in their lakes. Several other states are currently in the process, all to preserve the ecosystem, fisheries and safety of the lakes. Why? The big why? To protect the ecosystem of the lake, to protect the fisheries, to protect those that swim and enjoy water activities at Bation, to protect lake residents' docks, walls and property, and to prevent the spread of invasions invasive species. How will this be enforced? I know many people have asked that. I heard a lot of negativity about this, but this form was developed only because the local police and NCON police have requested the following information from individuals. People have been calling and making their complaints already, but the problem is they needed more information. So, this was developed for that purpose. What it is not, and you'll see there's quotes around all of this because there has been a lot on social media, so it is not an agenda, it is not an attack on individual rights, it is not all brought about by one person, namely Bill Denia, it is not an attempt to take away fun, it is not government bureaucracy, it is not an attempt to ban all water sports, it is not entitlement at its finest, it's not because people are inconvenienced. What I will also add is to what it is. It is about something that is worth fighting for. Those of us that live on the lake and are part of the Bation Lake Association have spent thousands of dollars trying to maintain its pristine condition. And I can tell you that when my husband's cellphone rings during the summer months, nine out of 10 times, it is not to thank him for the countless hours he has voluntarily invested to keep Bation as pristine as it is, or his work with DEEP and the First Selectmen to lower the water and obtain permits to assist with fighting invasive weeds, or his work with Greg Bugbee to continuously test the lake water and mapping of the lake, or his work with boat launch monitors, or his work with Senator Blumenthal in an effort to obtain additional funding to fight hydrilla. And with that being said, he takes every complaint seriously. Many of those that have spoken out in favor of the wake enhancements have clearly taken this as an attack against them personally, and this is seen as, quote, "taking away fun." However, I can assure you, it is not. It is about the guardians of the lake doing what everyone who lives on the lake should be doing, protecting it. Because no one's, quote, "good time" should ever be at the risk of harming our environment, the ecosystem, the animals, the fisheries, and most importantly, our safety. Thank you.
Now, let's make sure I can do this. I gotta plug this in. I think it's in the back. Okay. It's in your board meeting presentation. Untitled that one, right?
Yeah. Then we'll just come up blanket.
Okay. That's good.
And this is no forward.
Nope. You're gonna use your, um...
Oh, just an alphabet. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Nancy Bordick. I live on 20 Bailey Road in East Haddam. I'm a chemical engineer and an environmental engineer with a dual degree in engineering and public policy from Carnegie Mellon University. I worked as an environmental engineer for a decade and have done research on the movement of particles in riverbeds. I understand the movements of fluids, the impact on the environment and the implications of policy deployment. It is important that we study this topic, reference research, do studies and use statistical evidence to make policy decisions. We must determine implementing policy is affordable and a priority for a town resources, with resources as limited as we have. Given the budget hearing last night and the cuts have been made, it is imprudent to add cost, burden to our resources for a problem that will likely never happen, especially when there's mitigating actions that can be taken. I'm a lake resident and avid outdoorsman. I love water sports. I water ski, I wakeboard, surf, paddle, kayak and swim. I do not support this ordinance and have been disappointed that the BLA has been unwilling to have a discussion on options that would resolve the concerns of all parties, and they have sensationalized concerns and falsified claims to our lake residents. As I prepare my comments, I'm not sure what problem we're solving. Mostly, I have heard hearsay, references to unaffiliated locations and anecdotal comments that lack relevant facts, and I haven't seen any evidence of a problem. As I understand, there are a few concerns from the BLA regarding wake surfing. Large waves that have potential to knock people over. On Bation Lake and Mudus Reservoir, there are a lot of boats that can make large waves. To single out a boat while waking, wake surfing ignores all the wakes that are made by a variety of boats. Most boats that are doing water sports make a wake. The wake surfer is among many activities that create large waves. Tubing, kneeboarding and surfing all want a larger wave. Each of these activities can and do make similar-sized wake. Jet ski and wave runners can create a wake, a large wake in their circular maneuvers. Boats cruising at a speed just below planing or large cutty-cab and boats create a huge wake, and they have no restrictions on their distance from shore. My point is, there are a lot of boats that make large wakes. It's impossible to distinguish between what boat is making what wake. I see them all over our lake. If the problem is waves, then you need to solve the problem with all boats, and I don't think anyone is interested in restricting motorboats. Regarding hazards of waves, if you are at the lake, you need to understand your environment. There are waves. Be careful if you are unsteady on your feet or have a risk of falling. This is just common sense. For the vast majority of people, the waves on the lake are nowhere near strong enough to knock them down. My elderly 88-year-old mom has been in the lake and has never once been at risk of falling. Let me transition to research on wave height from a wake surf boat. In a study by Clifford Goudy and Louis Gerard, a nautique G23 wake sport boat similar to boats used on Bation Lake, was tested for wave height at varying distances from the boat. The test compared boats at different speeds and different depths. The results show wave heights from wake surfing drops from 26 inches to 14 inches within 250 feet. Not six feet, that has been told. The wake surf boat at the boat makes 26-inch wave. The impact of the wake from surfing dissipates in 250 feet. The chart that's on the slide here shows, if you were to look at the wake surf deep, which I think is the most relevant data point for us to look at, starts at the boat at 26 inches. That's measuring the wave height from the trough of the wave to the peak of the wave, not from the surface of the water. And you can see how it dissipates along these curves. This is a comparison of different boats using wakeboarding and cruising at both deep and There are many studies on wave dissipation. This is well-understood and has been studied for decades. I've enclosed in the back of this a list of references for other wake studies that you can look at. Shoreline erosion. Wind has significant erosion impact based on sustained nature. Last week, when the wind on Friday was upwards of 20 miles an hour with wind gusts over 30 miles an hour, the shoreline can be impacted. This sustained wind over distance will build energy in the waves and lead to substantial impact on the shoreline and the bottom of the waterway. I live in the northwest end of the lake in Brooks Cove. The prevailing wind comes across the lake towards us, and during storms and high winds, the wave can get large and break over the dock walls. This is the largest impact on shoreline erosion. In the Goudy-Gerrard study, research shows that the waves caused by a 10 mile-per-hour wind over a one-mile stretch, which is about the length of our lake, would equate to a wake surf boat passing every five minutes. We never have a wake surf boat passing anywhere close to that frequency. The erosion impact from wind dwarfs the impact from any other boat. Damage to the bottom of the lake. As with wave height, when you consider damage to the bottom of the lake, you need to consider all boats that cause damage. As an example, in Brooks Cove, there is a sandbar that is roughly four feet deep that extends across the mouth of the cove. Every type of boat goes at high speed over this shallow area. Fishing boats accelerate on this spit, jet skis and tubers alike all ride over this area when they are not on plane, putting the prop of their boat inches from the lake bottom. If we're worried about the lake bottom, we need to be worried about the impact of all boats. Additionally, I haven't seen an environmental impact statement that has been conducted on either of these lakes that shows evidence of a problem of damage caused. Surely, we are going to, we are not going to enact policy and use town resources to enforce without a proper impact statement. Once again, there are several studies that outline the impact of wake surfing on the bottom of the lake. In a study from 2022, Fay Gunderson Anderson, in the Journal of Resource and Protection, the results provided that operating a wake surf boat 200 feet from shore in at least 10 feet of water, the environmental impact is minimal. In this study, in section six, they use computational fluid dynamics to model both wave height and impacts of mixing below the surface. When evaluating the impact below the surface, the researchers accounted for the boat's speed, thrust and pitch of the prop. The prop is not angled down. The analysis shows prop wash reaches seven and a half feet below the surface, not the bottom of the lake, thus setting a limit of 10 foot of water as sufficient to surf without causing damage. You can see in the chart here, this is the model that was produced, and you can see the different color coding that will show you where there is velocity in the water. You can clearly see it at five foot and six foot, and it doesn't appear below that. When you step back and consider the BLA's arguments regarding potential damage to the bottom of the lake, it is completely undermined when you, when they facilitate having the lake drained three feet every year. Now, I'm a fan of the lake being drained three feet every year, but the bottom of the lake is exposed and the ecosystems, the fisheries that we're trying to protect are destroyed by freezing temperatures every year. The same organization that works with the state to lower the level of the lake is now saying they're worried about the lake ecology. You can't have both of these things and be credible. At the same time, in Mudus, there is a machine that whips up the weeds from the bottom of the lake. This clearly disrupts the sedimentary layer. You can't have an argument that states on one hand, you are worried about ecology, on the other hand, are destroying it. Lastly, the volume of wake surfers could grow. On Bation Lake, there are three boats that wake surf. Through the season, we surf one to two times a week depending on good weather. A surfer rides between five and 10 minutes. We're talking two hours a week. The lake could have a wake surfer riding. We generally don't ride if the lake is crowded. We don't ride at the same time as other surfers, and it's extremely uncommon for another wake surfer to come on our lake. The launch is very difficult to navigate. That being said, once we, the surfers, heard the concern being voiced from the BLA, we all self-regulated to surf in the center of the main body of the lake. I've never had a complaint directed at me. No one has stopped me at our dock or come to talk to us about lake complaints until yesterday. One person asked me about our boat. It was not a complaint. We have told people to seek out, to call us so we could adjust, but we haven't heard it once. We tried to get involved with the BLA to develop solutions, but we were prevented from being involved. All of these potential solutions can be solved. Weight height is solved with distance. Shoreline is also solved with distance. Damage to the lake bottom is solved with depth, and volume of surfers is already solved. My plea to the selectmen is to look at a wide variety of research, evaluate what other states have implemented, and if you deem this issue a priority for the town, add regulations that are based on science, implementing setbacks from the shoreline and depth. Don't ban activities that will impact generations based on what-ifs. I'd like to end with a personal story. I learned to water ski when I was five. I was a tiny kid and my brother went underwater to hold the adult-sized Connolly skis together so I could lift out of the water. From that point on, I was hooked. It was a sport that gave me pure joy. About six years ago, I thought this was over. I had debilitating back pain and was unable to walk more than 100 feet without extreme pain. The chronic pain continued for over six months. Finally, my doctor agreed to perform a microdissectomy on my L4 and L5 disc. I thought not only my water skiing would gone, but my entire lifestyle. Thankfully, after the surgery, my back was completely healed. But this surgery gave me a glimpse at the future. I would not be able to ski my whole life. I found surfing. It is so easy on your body. It's easy to learn and maneuver. I found a sport that would extend into my later life and keep me healthy, healthy and joyful. Many other people on this lake grew up loving water skiing and some other pretty crazy stuff. My guess is they would love to get out there again. Being behind a boat for more lake residents is where we wish we could spend all of our time. Surfing is a way that we can extend the experience a few more years, keep the joy. It's amazing and fun, and I invite everyone to give it a try. Stop by, our house is more than welcome to receive you and will take you out. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I want to say thank you to Ms. Denia and Ms. Bordick for their presentations, and it kind of...
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me? How's that better? Okay. Just a quick thank you to the ladies for their presentations, and what we'll do now is we'll go through the comments that we've received here, just because I don't want people coming up to the mic when we already have your letter here, I want them to kind of go together. I'm also going to start with the first letter that we received, and we're just going to go through this pile, and then anybody who has not submitted a letter will have an opportunity to speak. So, everybody will get the opportunity to speak tonight. First up is Eric Chamberlain. Are you here? Okay. Because he's not here, I'll read his letter, and that's how we'll go forward. So, Eric Chamberlain sent this in on June 4th. "Good morning. My name is Eric Chamberlain. I live on Bation Lake, Bation Road overlooking Bation Lake. I would like to propose a possible compromise to some of the wake boat issues and concerns. What if we allow the wake boats between 12 and 6? This would give swimmers, kayakers, fishermen dawn till noon and from 6 till dusk to enjoy the lake without the concern of large wakes that these boats make, yet still would allow the people with these types of boats to also enjoy the lake as well. I would like to see the same rule apply to the jet skis as well, but that's probably a different meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration of my suggestion." Next up is Jane Peterson. I was hoping you'd all be here, so I don't have to read to you. All right. "To the Board of Selectmen, I am writing..." Oh, oh, she's here. Oh, excellent. Come on up. You don't want to. You want me to read?
Yes.
Jane Pearson. 74 Smith Road. You want me to read this?
No.
You want to come up?
I don't want to.
You don't want to come up? All right. So, we will read hers because she doesn't want to come up. Okay. "To the Board of Selectmen, I am writing concerning the wake boats on Bation Lake and the damage they are causing to the lake. I've been on the lake my entire life and have never before witnessed the problems that have been surfacing. I have had to repair our lake wall yearly due to the erosion previously. It was about every four or five years. My 92-year-old mother was knocked down by the giant waves. Last summer was the first time in 65 years that I have not seen a crystal-clear lake midsummer. I distance swim almost daily and navigate by the rocks under the water. Last summer, it was no longer possible to see them. My new bathing suit has had a pattern with..." My new bathing suit has had a pattern with white on it. By the end of the summer, it was brown that would not come out. I have never had this issue before. Please consider how a wake boat operates and what this is going to do to upset the ecosystem and the bottom of our pristine lake. When my grandson is able to swim out to a depth of fifteen feet, I want him to be able to see the bottom just like I could two years ago. I'm requesting that wake boats be prohibited on Basin Lake." Jane Pearson, 41 Basin Road and 74 Smith Road, Wildwood Number Six. Thank you, Jane. Next up is Craig Shalafu. Craig, do you want your letter so you can read it? Or... They're getting tired of hearing from me, so...
I'll do my best.
Thank you. Yes.
Make sure you turn it on.
Are they all on? The lights?
Okay. "We would like to express our support for the ordinance to ban wake surfing on Basin Lake. We have had a seasonal lakefront cottage on Basin Lake for fifty-two years. We are deeply concerned about the environmental impact to the lake if enhanced wakes and wake surfing is allowed to exist on the lake. It appears to have been proven that wake surfing should only be allowed on lakes possessing the appropriate water depth of which Basin Lake does not possess. If anything, the water depths in Basin Lake have decreased over the past fifty years as the lake has silted in certain areas. We are also concerned that damage to this lake will ultimately reduce property values, which would be a major concern with the town leaders. Aside from the environmental impact, there is also the fact that those of us with smaller boats are unable to enjoy the lake at times due to large waves made by this activity created in safety. We applaud the work of the Basin Lake Association and its efforts to keep Basin one of the best and cleanest lakes in the state. Allowing wake surfing has a negative effect on the lake and its ecosystem and undermines the good work that is being done by this organization. Sincerely, Craig and Christine Shalafu, 74 Smith Road."
Sure. "To First Selectmen, Irene Haynes. I am writing in favor of banning the use of wake boats and other boats which have been modified allowing wake surfing. Wake boats themselves should operate on the lake if they do not engage in wake surfing or similar activities. I have a small aluminum Starcraft fishing boat, which is very difficult to maneuver when encountering waves made by one of these boats. At times, I feel that it's dangerous and these waves will swamp my boat. To avoid these situations, I usually use my boat Monday through Friday, mid to late mornings, since the wake boats are usually not on the lake at that time. As you have been notified, wake boats when used to allow wake surfing causes damage and disruption to the lake floor up to a depth of twenty feet. The bottom is scraped, allowing unwanted vegetation to grow, and this action mixes the water layers of the lake as well. Most of Basin Lake has a water depth of twenty feet or less. Only a very small section supports the wake surfing activity. BLA works very hard to control invasive weeds and thereby works hard to create a healthy lake environment. By allowing wake surfing, it would be contrary to BLA's efforts. Finally, the size of the waves of these boats make, as they reach the shoreline, shake docks and hit stone walls very hard, enhancing soil erosion. This is also detrimental to the lake. These waves are also hazardous to young children, elderly, when they are in the water. Since these individuals tend to be less steady on their feet, they are easily thrown about without holding on to something that gives them additional support, such as a tube or raft. With these reasons, safety, lake quality, weed control, and quickening of soil erosion, I would highly encourage you to support this ban. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Arnold Olson, 74 Smith Road, Wildwood Corporation, East Hattam, Connecticut." Thank you for your comment. Next up is Susan DeGeisus. What you said. Is she here? Is that you? Oh, you're here. Would you like to read your comment? Or... Okay, perfect. Do you need the paper? You got it. Okay.
Okay, my letter is in support of a ban on wake surfing on Basin Lake for ecological, safety... Okay. My letter is in support of a ban on Basin Lake, ban of wake surfing on Basin Lake for ecological, safety, and damage to property values. A study out of University of Minnesota found that distances greater than five hundred from shore are needed for waves generated by a wake surf boat to dissipate like those of a ski boat before hitting the shore. A more recent study by the University of Quebec shows that wake boats need to operate at least a thousand feet from shore to prevent erosion of shorelines. These boats are becoming more popular, and designers are creating boats to produce even larger wakes. With a state boat launch on the lake, more and more of these boats are going to show up. We must act now to protect Basin Lake, owners' property on the lake, and the safety of all using the lake. As a member of the BLA Board of Directors for over ten years, I've never heard people complain about waves from ski boats or boats pulling too, but there have been multiple
Sorry about that. I've got to keep turning it on and off. The next letter we have is information from Bill in regards to complaints and things like that. So I guess, is Bill here? Do you want us to read this, or do you want to come up? Well, you're welcome to share mine and see if that makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, we can just... No kidding. Yeah.
Better? Better. All right. Let me start here. I'm Bill Denia. Grew up there since I was an infant on Basin Lake. Took over to BLA about twenty years ago, almost twenty years now. Most of my complaints that I've gotten in the twenty years, as you guys know, with milfoil, fan warp, recently you got Hydrella, bladder warp. I worked with the state, the ag station, Greg Bugby is here to also tell us about the science of the thermal layer, the fisheries, the algae blooms that could occur. This is the biggest threat of Basin Lake right now. And you're right, there's only three boats on the lake right now. Fast forward five years. Now fast forward ten years. Go to correct craft, master craft, whatever name, brand, boat you want, see if you can find a ski boat without special ordering it. They don't make them anymore. They make all surf boats. They're getting bigger, they're getting heavier, and for small lakes like Basin, they're very destructive. I'm in touch with Lake Waramon in Tenth. They're in the process of actually banning the boats. There's six hundred acres there. They have forty-five surf boats. They're seeing the lake turn green. I invited them tonight. I don't know if you came in. Are you all here from Waramon Lake, anybody? We're going to have two representatives here to... They're doing intense studies at the lake. You could go to the... Google it, and you could see the videos with what's happening over there. Look at the property values on Basin. I understand, but it is what it is. Property values on Basin. You got a nice, beautiful lake. It's nice and clear. We've got the correct water and whatnot. We're here to protect the lake. That's my job right now. Until somebody else steps in, that's going to be my only job. I can't see how these boats are going to be beneficial to Basin. You got erosion, you have everything that was talked about on the slide there. Again, we spent thousands of dollars on weed control. We're spending twenty-two thousand four forty-eight I have to write a check for this week for milfoil, fan warp. And you know why we're doing it? So you all could have a nice, clean lake. That is the bottom line. I want to thank you for all your letters because your letters supported my phone calls. People said, "Who called you?" You know what? Here's the letters that they called me and complained to me and said to me, "Could you fix this? Let's fix it now when it's not a major, major problem." Thank you. And I will take any of your phone calls as questions. Thank you.
Next up is Brenda Magavoy? Magavie? McGovney?
McGovny.
McGovney. Brenda? All right. "My name is Brenda McGovney. I live at thirty-nine Laurel Cove Road in East Hattam, and I am in support of an ordinance banning wake boats in Basin Lake for the following reasons. Wake boats have a negative effect on Basin Lake's ecosystem primarily through shoreline erosion, sediment disturbance, and the potential for..." Probably means potential, "for spreading aquatic invasive species which the Basin Lake Association and its members are desperately trying to control. Basin Lake is a small lake and cannot withstand the powerful wakes generated by wake boats. The wake from these boats creates powerful wakes, making it difficult and dangerous for me to kayak and sail my sonfish sailboat, as when the wake boats go by me, the wake is so powerful it could flip my kayak or sailboat over. The wake boat's powerful wakes also makes it difficult to stand on my boat dock, and several times I've almost fallen off the boat dock while trying to balance myself to launch or dock my sixteen-point-five-foot lunge aluminum boat. These powerful wakes also create unnecessary wear and tear on our docks and our boats from the waves crashing into them after many hours of the day. Boats and docks are expensive items to own, let alone having to maintain and/or replace them. These wakes are destructive, and over time, they'll become costly to residents who live in the lake. These wake boats should be banned from Basin Lake in order to preserve one of the cleanest lakes in Connecticut and to preserve its beauty and fragile ecosystem and to keep all of those who use the lake for various recreational activities safe. It's plain common sense to ban these wake boats. The priority should be for the health of the lake and its ecosystem and for the safety of all the people who enjoy the lake. Thank you for reading my letter, and let's work together to get this ordinance passed." Brenda McGovney, sent via email. Next up is the same one.
Nope.
No?
Stuart.
Oh, sorry. This is, I guess, this is Stuart McGovney. I imagine if Brenda's not here, Stuart probably isn't either. Stuart, are you here? Okay. "My name is Stuart McGovney, and I live at thirty-nine Laurel Cove Road, East Hattam, Connecticut. I am in support of an ordinance banning wake boats of Basin Lake due to the reasons I discussed below." Sounds like I'm going to read the exact same letter. Let me just make sure. Yeah, so I'm just going to skip down to the bottom where he says something a little different. "Now's the time to act before it's too late to preserve the beauty of Basin Lake and all its inhabitants. I am in all in favor of banning wake boats on Basin Lake." Stuart McGovney. Thank you both for your comments. Next up, John Goak. Are you here? No, John Goak. Okay. "Dear Board of Selectmen, unfortunately, due to a family commitment, I will not be able to attend the June twenty-fifth town meeting regarding the ordinance banning wake boat surfing on Basin Lake. Please read this letter at the meeting, and I accept this letter as my support for such an ordinance. As a lifelong resident of the town and now as a resident of Sunset Acres, I have a number of concerns regarding wake boat surfing. I am concerned about the environmental impact of the lake ecosystem, the impact of the shoreline to docks and boats, and the safety of swimmers as a result of the waves generated by wake boat surfing. A number of studies have been done showing how turbulence from the wake boats impact the lake beds of lakes and the size and depth of Basin Lake. The long-term health of Basin Lake is critical for many of the property owners and should be protected. Basin Lake is a gem. On a personal level, I have had two instances where the waves generated by these boats have impacted me and my family members. I was nearly knocked off my dock when one of the waves came across the lake crashing into it, and while playing in the water near our shoreline, my six-year-old granddaughters were knocked over by the wave generated by one of these boats. Quick action by a family member stopped the second wave from pushing the girls into the stone seawall, which would have caused serious injury. This is unacceptable. The lake should be protected for all of those who use and enjoy, but not just for the few who wake surf. I am in total support of an ordinance banning wake boat surfing. Sincerely, John J. Goak." Thank you, John. Next up, we have Bruce and Chris Fletcher. Okay. You guys getting tired of me yet? All right. "Dear East Hattam Selectmen, my wife and I strongly support the ordinance to stop and prevent wakeboard surfing behind boats that produce big wake and waves. The boats that can take on heavy loads of water to make big waves and wakes, and the results big waves can do and do cause major damage to the lake bottom plant life and macro and micro invertebrates, cause turbulence that scours and stirs up the bottom sediment, reducing the water clarity, which reduces the growth of aquatic plants and their production of oxygen, which makes the water colder..." I'm sorry. "makes the water colder and causes increased shoreline erosion. All this damage to the delicate ecology of our lake decreases water quality, leading to less recreational desirability of patients' water, which in turn eventually reduces property values and which then lessens the property tax. Revenues for the town now enjoys and hurts the recreational economics of town and area businesses. Another negative is that the big waves are rough on the elderly and young kids swimming and playing in the water. While wakeboard, wake and wave surfing is fun exercise and recreation, it causes too much damage to a small, shallow lake like Basin. The sport and these boats should be taken to deeper waters. Please pass this ordinance to ban wake surfing on Basin Lake." Thank you, Bruce and Chris Fletcher, 44 Bailey Road, 62 Dover Road, New Britain. All right. Next up is Dr. Greg Esnick. On Fieldstone?
He's not.
What is it?
He's not.
Are you here? All right. He's not. Okay. All right. Sorry to have probably not done well on your name, but I do apologize. "I have been a resident of East Hattam and live on Basin Lake for over twenty years. I am strongly in favor of the Board of Selectmen to approve the ordinance for additional boat safety on Basin Lake. I have been personally affected by the waves created by wake boats. My grandchildren cannot safely swim or kayak when these boats are in the lake, creating these large wakes. I have had to add addition structure to my dock to stabilize the deck in order to walk on it when these wakes hit my dock. I also want to bring to your attention the recent increase in jet ski speed and lack of respect for the rules of the lake. Police patrol used to be at least a weekly presence on the lakes. We now have no police on our lake. I have witnessed at least one accident where two jet skis collided and many times when excessive noise and speed has changed the safety and character of our great lake." Thank you, Dr. Greg. On Fieldstone Drive. Next up is Bob Crotocher. Did I say that right? Crotocher, Wildwood Association, cottage number two. Short. Are you here? "I am writing in reference to the surfboards with enhanced waves. I agree with Basin Lake Association to ban these boats from Basin Lake for safety and ecosystem. A year or so ago, my grandson was in an inflatable boat with an outboard. A wave hit the boat and threw him out of the boat. He couldn't identify the boat or the operator. He was too busy trying to get back into the boat. He wasn't injured, but could have been. Let's be safe and wise and ban these boats. Thank you for caring about our lake." Bill Crocheteer. Did I say... I don't know if Sandy's right. Mary Ellen DeLucio. Do you want your letter, Mary Ellen? You have it. Okay. Thank you.
I have one quick question before I start my time. I'm here to represent Sunset Acres, but I would also like to make personal comments. Should I do that outside of my three minutes with a second three minutes or try and squeeze it all into one? Okay. Dear Selectmen, I am writing as my capacity as president of Sunset Acres Beach Association of Basin Lake. On June seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the Sunset Acres Beach Association of Basin Lake by Board of Directors and members present voted unanimously to support the enactment of the wake surf ordinance prohibiting the creation of surfing waves. Our association is comprised of more than a hundred homeowners. In addition, we support prohibiting any vessel from taking on water ballast to submerge the stem. The evidence is clear. Wake surfing is an environmental disaster and prevents customary enjoyment of the lake by swimmers, other boaters, and anglers. An environmental study commissioned by the State of Vermont and the Lake Waramon Task Force confirmed a wake boat's downward thrust disturbs the bottom to a depth of no less than twenty-five feet. than 25 feet. These depths are the nursery of all that lives in our lake. Shallow areas are vital to the food chain, and wakeboats upset this fragile habitat. Maintaining the water quality, clarity, and temperature is vital to the integrity of the lake and its usefulness as a recreational area. Please see the informative video which is shown tonight. Basin Lake is only 275 acres, and it has a minimal area with depths greater than 25 feet. The area in Basin Lake which exceeds 25 feet is minuscule and effectively makes responsible wake surfing impossible. We support the ban and urge the Selectmen to place this on the media agenda for determination by qualified voters of East Hattam as soon as possible. I would also like to present a petition signed by over 100 members of our association supporting the ordinance. And I'd like to impress upon you, this was a lot of work, but it was worth it. And this is how serious we look at this issue of wake surfing. Unfortunately, I'm almost out of time. I can't make, I did want to mention that I'm a chemist, and I own a water testing laboratory. For over 15 years, I was in the Board of Connecticut Federation of Lakes. I've seen firsthand damages these wakeboats cause, and we need to stop it."
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Mary Ellen. I appreciate your comments. Okay. Thank you. We'll try and get people to stick, I think you have to get really close to the mic gang. Okay, next up, Jennifer Kavanaugh. Thank you. Jennifer, real close to the mic if you would. Use your outside voice.
I am a member of the Sunset Acres Association, and I support the enactment of the wake surf ordinance prohibiting the creation of surfing waves. Our association also supports prohibiting any vessel from taking on water ballast to submerge the stern. I have read about the damage these boats cause to the environment and the lake. My husband was on the dock at Sunset Acres Beach. There was a wake surf boat on the other side of the lake, and the waves swayed the dock drastically that he was having a hard time standing, and I attached videos to my email. I support this ban and urge you to place this on the meeting agenda for determination by the qualified voters of East Hattam as soon as possible. Thank you, Jennifer Kavanaugh, and I'm the treasurer of the Sunset Acres Association of Basin Lake.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next up is Susan Sabo-Bankston. Not here. Okay. "Dear Selectmen, I am a member of the Sunset Acre Association. I support the enactment of wake surf ordinance prohibiting the creation of surfing waves. Our association also supports prohibiting any vessel from taking on water ballast to submerge the stern. I have read about the damage these boats cause to the environment of the lake. I support this ban and urge you to place this on a meeting agenda for determination by the qualified voters of East Hattam as soon as possible. Thank you." Susan Sabo-Bankston, Secretary of Sunset Acres Association, 19 Lakeside Drive. Next up, Pat Capel. "Dear Mrs. Haynes, I've been a supporter of yours for every election you've been in on the ballot. I now have a request for you, and that is for you to ban wake surfing on Basin Lake. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the upcoming meeting, so please take in consideration my request. I live on Ballahack Road number two, and I'm a member of Sunset Acres. For the longest time, we, we time our lake has been considered one of the most top lakes in Connecticut and one of the cleanest. It is imperative for the health of the lake that we do not, we do what is necessary to protect it. Please support our cause and support the lake by banning wake surfing on the lake. Thank you." Pat Capel, 165 Ballahack Road, number two. Don Missoni. Sure. "Dear Selectmen, please support the Basin Lake proposed boating ordinance to eliminate wake surfing and the use of wake enhancement devices. My family has been seasonal residents of Basin Lake for over 65 years, and we've been privileged to enjoy Basin's crystal clear waters. We need to do whatever it is, whatever it takes to preserve the water quality for future generations by protecting the ecosystem of the lake. Wakeboats in surfing mode disturb the natural thermocline layer and sediments in the lake causing increased nutrients in the water which promote algae growth. Basin Lake is a small lake with insufficient deep areas to accommodate wake surfing. As such, it should not be allowed. Thank you." Don Missoni, 172 Lakeside Drive, East Hattam, Connecticut. Next up, Don LaRusso. LaRusso?
I'm having a little..."
All right. "Dear First Selectman Haynes, we are writing to express our strong opposition to the use of wakeboats for the purpose of wake surfing, not only on our lake, Basin Lake, but also on other small lakes like East Hattam, any other small lake in East Hattam. The specific activity of wake surfing via the filling on the onboard ballast system in wakeboats adding over 1,000 pounds to the stern of the boat and creating a wave exceeding six feet in height poses significant long-term harm to ecosystems in small lakes such as Basin Lake and Modus Reservoir. It is known, it is now a known fact that the wake surfing off of full ballast wakeboat has caused many issues on lakes across the U.S., including, number one, the downward thrust of the waters in less than 25 feet disturbs this lake bottom, causing harm to the lake aquatic plants and fish population the large wave creates. Number two, the large wave created has contributed to shoreline erosion, has damaged docks and boats docked on them, and poses potential injury to swimmers, kayakers, and paddleboarders. And number three, the improper cleaning of the ballast system when boats are used in various bodies of water, thereby introducing other invasive species to our lake. We are year-round residents of our Basin Road home residing within the Sunset Acres Association of Basin Lake. We have been active members on both the Sunset Acres Association as well as active members on the Basin Lake Association for over 20 years. We've also witnessed firsthand what a wakeboat wave can do, including tossing people off the association dock as it passed down the lake, even damaging our dock last year. We are not looking to have these boats banned from our lakes as they can be used as normal ski tube wakeboard boats. However, we strongly request an ordinance prohibiting wakeboats from drawing water into their ballast system for the purpose of creating larger than normal wakes. Sincerely, Donald and Judy LaRusso, 47 Basin Road, East Hattam." Thank you. Widger Family. Widger? Widger?
Widger.
Widger? I said it right the first time? Do you want your letter? Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Yep. My name is Michael Widger, and our family is at a cottage house in Basin Lake since 1961. We've enjoyed all kinds of water sports in Basin Lake. Wake surfing is the only water sport that has been proven to damage the ecosystem through shoreline erosion, sediment disturbance, and potential for spreading of aquatic invasive species. I'm hoping this ordinance will, I hope this ordinance will prohibit and end the enhancement in the health of our beautiful lake. These boats can, I guess I should have heard you do that. These boats can remain, but let's stop the damage to the ecosystem. Stonewalls, docks, rafts, and our ability to take a slow cruise without feeling like we're on the Connecticut River. I also, I don't, I am a representative of Laurel Cove Association. This is my own view. I also have a petition with about 12 signatures on it that I'll give to you, and now I think is the time to act.
Thank you, Mr. Widger. I appreciate you reading your letter. Good job. Next up is Sharon Trumbly. Are you here, Sharon? "My name is Sharon Trumbly. I live at 44 Laurel Cove Road, East Hattam, and I have been a summer resident at Basin Lake my entire life and for the last six years a full-time resident. I am writing in support of implementing a town ordinance banning wake surf boats on the waters of Basin Lake. I have experienced the negative impacts that these boats have on health and safety of our lake ecosystem, shoreline properties, and the innocent people trying to enjoy the beauty of our lake. Although I now live in Laurel Cove, which is more protected than the main lake itself, the large and powerful waves from these boats have crashed over our raft, the back of our docked boats, and our stone wall. My family owns a cottage in Wildwood, and the large waves from these boats have caused damage to our stone wall and caused my elderly neighbor to get knocked down while she was simply trying to enjoy wading in the water on a beautiful day. My sister's 14-foot Boston Whaler has been knocked around on her dock and broke loose. We now know, we know when we are trying to enjoy the lake on our pontoon boat and see the wake surf boats out, we need to secure anything on the boat, including ourselves. We also know that these boats are on the lake. We should not risk taking a paddleboard or kayak out on the lake for being knocked over, fear of being knocked over. Last year, we had an abundant amount of weeds float up on our shoreline, something I have not seen ever before. It was almost a daily activity to pull these weeds out of the lake. Also, the lake water was brown, especially after a weekend of several surf boats on our lake. After seeing several various disturbing videos about these boats to score the bottom of the lake, it started to make sense as to me how and where these newer weeds and brownwater was coming from. If you have not seen these videos, I urge you to do so. They are shocking and eye-opening. The BLA and private citizens have spent thousands of dollars over the year in attempt to control invasive weeds in Basin Lake and keep it pristine lake that we all know and love. The wake surf boats are disrupting that attempted by stirring up the bottom of the lake anywhere in the depth of less than 25 feet, which is a large percentage of the lakes, as Basin Lake's average depth is only about 15 and a half feet. Basin Lake is too small and too shallow a lake to support these boats. I urge you as trusted Select Board to protect Basin Lake by banning wake surf boats because it's too late. Thank you, Sharon Trumbly." Zach Jezek. Are you here? He's not here. Okay. Okay. "Dear Selectmen, I am writing to express my strong support of the adoption of a local ordinance that prohibits wake surfing and the creating of surfing waves on Basin Lake and Modus Reservoir. As concerned citizen, I'm sorry, as a concerned resident who values the health and longevity of our natural resources, I believe such an ordinance is both necessary and urgent for the protection of this beloved body of water. Basin Lake is a cherished recreational ecological resource in East Hattam. However, it is increasingly vulnerable to environmental pressures, particularly from wake-enhanced boating activities. Wake surfing involves the use of specially weighted boats to generate large waves, poses a significant threat to the health of our lake and surrounding community. Invasive aquatic plants such as hydrilla have already been identified in Basin Lake as confirmed by a 2024 plant survey. Although the initial findings were managed through hand-pulling, the threat remains real and persistent. Wake surf boats which use internal ballast systems are known to transfer invasive species from one body to another and can contribute to their spread within a lake by stirring up bottom sediments where these plants can take root. Further, surf-mode boats, I'm sorry, surf-mode wakes are dramatically more powerful than those from standard boats. Studies show that these waves can reach heights of four times larger and penetrate the water column as much as 26 feet. On a relatively small lake like Basin, this causes excessive shoreline erosion, disturbs fish habitats, and reintroduces nutrients into the water column, fueling harmful algae blooms. These blooms degrade water quality, pose health issues to swimmers and pets, and reduce the lake's recreational value. The economic implications of these environmental impacts are equally concerning. Lakes like Basin, Modus Reservoir, and Lake Hayward contribute over $1.2 million annually East Hattam's tax base. Studies have shown that degraded lake quality can reduce lakeside property values as much as 36 to 43 percent, translating into a significant losses for our local economy and municipal budget. Communities in other states such as Minnesota, Vermont, South Carolina, and Oregon have already implemented restrictions on wake surfing to safeguard their lakes. East Hattam has the opportunity to show the same leadership by acting now to prevent irreversible damage to Basin Lake and the Modus Reservoir. I respectfully urge the Board to take this issue seriously and move forward with a local ordinance that prioritizes the health of our lake, the safety of its users, and the economic vitality of our town. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to protect East Hattam's natural resources. Sincerely, Zach Jezek, 132 Lakeside Drive, East Hattam." Thank you, Zach. Next up, Matt Cronin and the Cronin family. Are you all here? Anybody? Bueller? Okay, next up. "Selectmen, I want to send you an email in support of the wake surfing ordinance on Basin Lake. As a longtime Basin summer residence and cottage owner, our family is in support of the wake surfing ordinance. We have watched the damage done to the lakeshore, docks, boats, and other personal property by waves produced by these unchecked boaters, and we would like to see it stopped. The long-term damage being done to the lake bottom with these waves have also caused additional invasive weed species to grow and thrive in the lake. The BLA and the state of Connecticut has spent substantial amounts of money to deal with the weed problem and for the long-term health of the lake. We need to limit activities that threaten its future. I understand people want to enjoy the lake, but so do the rest of us, and I want to see my children and grandchildren enjoy the lake for many years to come. Please help us protect the lake by passing the wake surfing ordinance. Thanks for your support, Matt Cronin and the Cronin family." Gary Trumbly. "My name is Gary Trumbly, and I live at 44 Laurel Cove Road, East Hattam, and I am writing in support of the ordinance banning wake surf boats and Basin Lake. I'm very concerned about the damage to the lake enhanced waves." I'm going to check again just because it looks like it's the same length as the other. Just trying to save you guys all time. It is the same. Okay. Thank you, Gary. All right. Up next is, it's short, and I'm not sure who it's from. It's Avanti@AOL.com, so I'm not sure who that is, but they haven't signed the letter. "We have owned a waterfront cottage on Basin Lake for over 30 years. I would like to voice my opinion on the banning of wake wave boats on Basin Lake. They will damage our shoreline and our lake bottom with huge waves they make. May, also may tip us over when we, when we, when they pass our canoe, kayak, paddleboard, and surfboard. I hope you will support this very important ordinance of the Basin Lake Association purposes. Thank you." Jason Hoops. Winner, winner.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, perfect, already. My name's Jason Hoops. I've had the pleasure of living on Basin Lake the entire 27 years of my life. I wrote a pretty lengthy letter back in the fall when this initial issue all came up, and a lot of the points were made by the second presentation, which I appreciate. I enjoy a presentation based off facts and statistics as opposed to opinions and cartoons. But anyway, another comment was already made earlier today about fast-forwarding five years, fast-forwarding 10 years, what's going to happen to the lake. I would like to instead rewind about 15 years. I have been wake surfing on Basin Lake for the last 15 years, and I would just like to ask where exactly is the environmental impact right now? The fact that we're blaming all the invasive species solely on wake surfing boats, in my opinion, is kind of absurd. It more relies on the boats coming in from outside sources. So if we are more going to crack down on the invasive species, it should be taken to the boat launch and those boats coming in as opposed to the three wake surfing boats that we have on this lake. One other point I would like to make, you know, there's been the talk again about the environmental impacts on the lake. I did a little research on my own. Initially, came across a peer-reviewed study titled "Numerical Study of the Impact of Wake Surfing on Inland Bodies of Water." The paper determined that, and this is in quotes, "Surfing at least 200 feet from the shore in a water depth of at least 10 feet, the environmental impact is minimal." This study also presented that boat waves dissipate rapidly and have little to no impact on shore when compared to waves that are driven by the wind. There's one other study I'd like to bring into the fact that there's another peer-reviewed article titled "New Peer- reviewed Paper Analysis: Wake Surfing Show Impact," which actually came to the conclusion that wake, boat wakes can increase oxygenation, which is actually beneficial to the aquatic species. One final point I would like to make as well. Again, blaming wake surfing boats for the large waves, again, and obviously I'm pro wake surfing, that's not what I'm here for. But I would also like to point out, if you take any regular ski boat, any regular outboard boat, and you put it at maximum occupancy, take any eight people here, it's going to make a wave just as big as any wake surf boat out there, regardless of the ballast things. That is all. Thank you, guys.
Just so Gretchen knows, I think we received your letter about five times. I'm not sure whether you kept hit and send, but we got it. All right. "To the Town of East Hattam Select Board, Irene Haynes, Eric Dale, Tanya Borgoin, my name is Gretchen Byes, and I live locally in Hattam. I am in support of an ordinance banning wakeboats on Basin Lake. I am writing to you as a concerned member of the community and lifelong resident of the Basin Lake area. I have had the privilege of growing up on this lake, and it has been a sacred place for my family for four generations. The peaceful waters, abundant wildlife, and natural beauty of this lake is integral to both the environment and our local way of life. I now find myself deeply troubled by the increasing use of wakeboats, particularly those utilizing surf functions, and the significant harm they are causing to our beloved lake. Wakeboats produce enormous waves that cause extensive shoreline erosion..." Wake boats produce enormous waves that cause extensive shoreline erosion, damaging the delicate ecosystems that depend on the stability of the lakeshores. These powerful waves wash away plants that help prevent erosion, disturb the habitats of local wildlife, and contribute to the further degradation of water quality. Such environmental consequences threaten not only the aesthetic and recreational value of the lake, but also the health of the entire ecosystem. Additionally, the wake of these boats presents a serious safety risk, especially to vulnerable individuals such as elderly and small children. These powerful wakes, waves have known to knock people off their feet, which could result in injuries. A relaxing day on the water should never come with such dangers, yet the use of wake boats creates a hazardous environment for anyone who isn't prepared for sudden surges of wake activity. The damaging effects of these wakes are already evident on Bation Lake. Our lake is small and cannot sustain the kind of restraint these wake boats impose. Without proper regulation, the damage to the shoreline ecosystem will continue to worsen, and this cherished natural resource will quickly become distorted beyond recognition. For the healthy environment and the safety of the public and the preservation of this sacred place that has been a part of our family's history for generations, I urge you to swiftly enact an ordinance banning the use of surf function on wake boats. Such a measure would ensure the continued protection of Bation Lake and safeguard its future for generations to come. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter. I trust that you will act swiftly to protect our community, our environment, and our cherished traditions. Elizabeth Bellades. Dear Selectmen, I am writing to you to express my support for the proposed ordinance to prohibit enhanced wake boat wakes primarily used to surf on Bation Lake. Please allow this to be decided by the voters of East Haddam. Elizabeth Bellades, 51, Bation Road. Patrick Dobrowski. Hello, my name is Patrick, and I've been visiting Bation Lake for the last five-plus summers. I recently heard that there's a meeting coming up not to, up to discuss banning wake surfing on Bation Lake. I would like to let you and the council know that I am not in favor of banning wake surfing on Bation Lake. Thank you. Victoria Drumsky. Hello, my name is Victoria, and I have been visiting Bation Lake for the five-plus summers. I recently heard that there's a meeting coming up discussing banning wake surfing at Bation Lake. I would like to let you know, then the town council know, that I am not in favor of banning wake surfing on Bation Lake. Thank you, and have a nice day. Christine Piera. Okay. Hi, good afternoon. We are lakefront property owners on Mudus Reservoir. Can you clarify for us the following about a vote? Did you answer these questions for her?
No, I only answered, yeah, because she thought there was going to be a vote tonight.
Okay, there's no vote tonight.
She was like, there's no vote.
Yeah. Okay.
It's your question.
Okay. All right, well, this gal has questions. Christina has questions, so I'll just read the questions, but I'm not going to answer them right now. But at least so you know that if you're, if you have a question, maybe it's going to be asked. Hi, good afternoon. We are lakefront property owners of Mudus Reservoir. Can you clarify the following on the vote for the June 25th? If the bill is passed as is, will creating wakes for wakeboarders be banned? Two, will creating wakes for tubers be banned? Three, will driving skiers behind a boat with 1.5 to 2-foot wake be banned? Four, will driving a boat that has the capability of having tanks filled to create wakes be banned, or only if tanks are full? We are property owners to see the pros and cons of what is being proposed, but we want to ensure we correctly understand the full implications of what's being voted on. Thank you. Best, Christine. All good questions. Okay, Kimberly Burmanny. Not here, okay. To the Town of East Haddam Board of Selectmen, I am writing to state my support for an ordinance prohibiting wave enhancement devices on Bation Lake. I've spent numerous summers since I was a baby on Bation Lake at my grandparents' cottage. This is where I learned to swim, as well as many other water sports. My family still visits Bation Lake often to see family and friends. We love Bation Lake for its tranquil environment and clear, clean water. I'm even looking on the market for my own little slice of Bation heaven. All of that being said, the wave enhancement devices have me very concerned. One of my favorite water sports is paddleboarding with my dog. The larger waves make it near impossible to stay standing, and my pup almost always falls off. My children are intimidated by the wakes, waves, and don't like swimming or even being near the water until the big waves, when the big waves are coming by, and that is with a minimal amount of these on the lake. I would hate to buy a property and have the enhanced waves ruin some of our favorite parts of the lake. In addition to my family's enjoyment, the enhanced waves cause concern for the ecosystems within the lake. While some may say it's only a small impact, I would argue that any extra impact can have a lot of problems. These enhancement devices can cause fish populations to change, ultimately changing the water. Bation Lake has a long reputation for being one of the cleanest lakes in Connecticut. This is one of my favorite parts about this lake. I would, I do not feel gross swimming. I don't have lily pads weeding up and surrounding my legs, and I would love to have it stay that way. Bation Lake is a hidden gem that I've loved all my life. Please do the right thing and vote to support the ordinance prohibiting wave enhancement devices on Bation. Sincerely, Kimberly Burmanny. Carol Gilbert. Okay. To the people, to the Town of East Haddam Board of Selectmen, I am writing to express my support of an ordinance that would ban the use of wake, wave enhancement devices on Bation Lake. I have been coming to Bation Lake for 58 years, since 1967. In 1994, I became a resident. I taught my children to swim, and I love the water here. My family cherishes Bation Lake for its peaceful atmosphere and pristine water. We have numerous friends come back each year to visit. It only takes one visit to fall in love with Bation Lake. These wave enhancement devices can negatively impact our many ecosystems. Bation Lake is known for its cleanliness. Driving past the reservoir, seeing all the lily pads makes me question as to which, makes me question how much wave enhancement devices will change our water quality. Will Bation Lake be filled with lily pads in five years? Will the weeds have, we have already been dealing with, take over due to the wave enhancements, stirring them up and spreading their seeds? If weeds take over, will the fish be impacted? If so, will the water also get murky? How much will my favorite place change in the next five, 10, and 15 years? Finally, the wave enhancement devices have me very concerned for my favorite place. The enhanced waves have caused issues in my floating dock, as well as my boats. I have pulled up on it. The enhanced waves crashing splash, otherwise dry people relaxing in the sun. Kayaking is a favorite activity for my family, though the large waves often spoil the fun. It stinks when you can't enjoy your favorite activities. Bation Lake has been a special, tucked-away retreat I've loved all my life. Please vote in support of the ordinance prohibiting wave enhancement devices on Bation Lake. Sincerely, Carol Gilbert. Mary Lata Turulu, Turulo. Okay, dear board members, as a lakefront homeowner and longtime member of the Mudus Reservoir community, I am writing to respectfully share my concerns regarding the proposed restrictions on wake surf and wake boat, wakeboard boats, and to raise additional concerns about current weed removal practices and the risk of invasive species being introduced through outside boats. My family have been part of the Mudus Reservoir community for over 70 years. This lake has always represented tradition, togetherness, and the kind of family, family-friendly environment that encourages responsible recreation and shared respect for nature. It's disappointing to see how abrupt ordinance is and proposed restrictions that can radically alter that legacy, especially without the inclusive dialogue and balance that our community deserves. First and foremost, I fully support the protection and long-term sustainability of Mudus Reservoir. Like many in our community, I care deeply about preserving the health of the lake for futures and erations. However, I believe that proposed bans of wake surf and wakeboard boats are not the most effective solution and may unfairly target responsible boaters who already follow safety and environmental best practices. Wake surf and wakeboard boats, when operated responsibly, can absolutely coexist with a healthy lake ecosystem. Instead of a ban, I respectfully urge the committee to consider a more balanced and evidence-based approach. One, discourage repetitive passes in narrow or ecologically sensitive areas. Two, launch a boater education campaign focused on ballast management, shoreline respect, and invasive species prevention. In addition to boating regulations, I believe two other pressing environmental issues deserve urgent attention. Eco-harvester impact. While the eco-harvester may seem like a proactive solution to managing aquatic vegetation, in practice, it often causes more harm than good. The equipment stirs up lakebed sediment, fragments invasive weeds, and disrupts aquatic habitats, potentially accelerating weed proliferation instead of resolving it. This method needs to be reevaluated with the same environmental scrutiny applied to other lake activities. Invasive species from external boats. Another major, often overlooked, threat is the introduction of invasive species from fishing boats trailered in from other lakes. Many of these boats are launched without any inspection and require any follow-clean-drain-dry protocols. Without local ordinances or a monitoring system in place, the risk of contamination from invasive plant, species, larvae, and aquatic hitchhikers is high and growing. If we are truly committed to protecting Mudus Reservoir, we must take a holistic view of all factors impacting our lake, signaling out one group of lake users while ignoring other significant contributors to ecological damages, both unfair and ineffective. A call for balanced policy. Let's move forward with a comprehensive, inclusive plan that supports both recreational and conservation. I recommend a fair, science-based set of regulations for all lake users, stronger enforcement and education around invasive species prevention, collaborative planning involving homeowners, boaters, fishermen, and environmental experts. Thank you for your continued efforts to protect Mudus Reservoir. My family and I remain committed to being part of the solution, as we have for generations, and I welcome the opportunity to participate in future discussions or planning groups. Respectfully. Mary Lata Turulo, Blue Heron Lane, East Haddam. Mary and Greg, I think. Thank you, Mary. Paula Robinson. I have been enjoying summers on Bation for over 40, I'm sorry, 70 years. East Haddam is lucky to be home of such a beautiful lake. Let's not allow certain types of watercraft to harm this lake. If wake boats are causing problems which could have a negative impact on the lake, they should be banned. Certain jet skis, not all, have also become a problem. They are extremely loud and tear up the lake for hours on end, even until late in the evening, past 7:00 p.m. We could use extra police patrols on the lake, especially on weekends. Finally, the fireworks displays at Bation were over the top last year, to the point where windows were shaking. Enforcement of laws regarding certain types of fireworks would much appreciate this summer. Thank you for your concern regarding these issues. Bation Lake is a treasure. Let's keep it that way. Paula Robinson, 74 Smith Road, Wildwood, number four. Michael Santoro. To whom I concern, I am unable to attend the 6/25/25 town meeting regarding Bation Lake and Mudus Reservoir. I am sending this email as my voice and input. I am writing to fully endorse prohibiting the wake boats and wake surfing on Bation Lake and Mudus Reservoir. Thank you. Michael Santoro, Bation Lake, Summer Residence. Michelle Whitis and Jason Torrance. Dear members of the Town, East Haddam Town Council, I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed ordinance regarding wake boats and wake surfing on Bation Lake. As a homeowner and active participant in a wide range of water activities on the lake, I do not believe that wake surfing presents a significant enough issue to warrant such restrictive measures. When I first proposed installing my 65-foot water slide, I was required to obtain approval from the Wetlands Commission. I understood and respect the importance of the environmental oversight. I demonstrated that slide would draw water from the lake without disrupting the ecosystem, and it ultimately approved. Initially, I too faced backlash on the community, but once all sides and facts were presented, a balanced outcome was achieved. I urge the council to take similarly thoughtful and respective approach when evaluating the impact of wake boating. Bation Lake has long been a place where residents and visitors enjoy the water in a spirit of mutual respect and shared responsibility. Rather than banning specific activities outright, I believe the better path is to implement clear guidelines and best practices that address valid concerns around safety, shoreline protection, and environmental impact without eliminating cherished recreational opportunities. For example, we currently allow airplanes to land on the lake and permit outside boats to enter, both of which arguably pose greater risks and environmental impact than wake boats owned by local residents. Imposing unnecessary restrictions not only limit to how we enjoy the lake today, but also sets precedent that could further affect, could affect future generations. We must preserve Bation Lake as a space for respectful coexistence, recreation, and shared enjoyment, not exclusion. Regards, Mike, Michelle Whitis and Jason Torrance, 113 Lakeside Drive, East Haddam. Linda Simmons. Okay. My, my name is Linda Simmons. I have lived seasonally at Bation Lake for over 60 years. We own a wake surfing ski boat purchased over 15 years ago. My husband, Robert Hoops, has a safe, responsible boat operator his entire life. He is 69 years old. Living on a lake a community acquires compromises in working together to find solutions. People don't like barking dogs. When the owner's ignore it, shall we ban noisy dogs? Others don't like loud sounds of jet skis, leaf blowers, or lawn mowers when sitting outside trying to eat dinner or read a book. Shall we make rules about all those things, too? Regarding a complete ban of wake surfing, this would be discriminatory to the people who have certain disabilities that don't allow them to balance on two water skis or insert their foot into a binding. Some older or younger people don't have the strength to water ski normally. They can, however, stand up on a large surfboard-type device, hold on to a rope, and get the feeling of skiing like all other able-bodied people can. If you ban this activity, you are deliberately denying handicapped and disabled people from the ability to enjoy the lake just as anyone else does, in the only way they can. I'm wondering if any of this would be considered discriminatory, and if you have to look at ADA laws and are comfortable banning this. Other lakes have worked out ways to compromise when everyone can enjoy their activities, while others completely ban all motorized activities and only allow kayaking rowboats. Our lake certainly can set up a zone that is recommended 200 feet from the shoreline to allow, shore allowance for waves to dissipate. In this case, the BLA seems completely disinterested in attempting to solve an apparent or imagined issue in a fair, legal way. This is not a good example for community living. I encourage the select, select people and the BLA, consider my comments and gain a wider perspective of this issue before taking this action. We aren't the only wake boat owners, and some people paid a premium for these type of boats to be used in a specialized purpose. Wake surfing is one of the safest water sports activities on the lake at less than 10 miles per hour. We have also, we have always wake surfed in the middle of the lake, away from the shore, and will continue. I remain hopeful that reasonable people can come up with fair and equitable solutions and compromises if they try. As an aside, someone on social media brought up the horrible condition of East Hampton's Lake Pocatopod. I lived there for over 24 years until 2020, and the reason for this terrible condition is the overbuilding of large developments and mega mansions around the lake and the application of lawn fertilizers which washes right into the water. The nitrogen is highly destructive and directs feeds of horrible algae bloom situation year after year. The town literally has been trying to resolve this for over 25 years or more. To be honest, I'm surprised that BLA members aren't looking into banning fertilizer, something that truly will destroy a lake. Sincerely, Linda Simmons, Wildwood Association Cottage, number 13. Thank you for your comments. Rob Hoops. Oh, another one. Oh, different, different Hoops. You're welcome to come down, Rob.
I'm just talking.
Okay. Do you want to read it? We got an Irene break.
My name's Robert Hoops. I live in Wildwood Association. Uh, live in, can you hear me? Live in Wildwood Association. I'm against the ban. I've operated the wakeboard boat for 15 years. This will be the 16th year in a ski boat, 15 years before that. I love wake surfing because at almost 70, I could still do it. That's the thing I like about it. But the thing I find disingenuous about the environmental impact list from the first presentation was technically you cannot have an environmental impact without an environmental impact study. I can say that my boat affects the fish, or the bass boat going by my property affects the fish, but I can't say it technically until we do, it's called a before-and-after study. If you listen to the first study, it sounds like there might be a lake when we get back there. You listen to the second study, there's really after seven and a half feet of depth, there doesn't seem to be an issue. She's a trained hydrologist. There's a lot of weight behind that study. Having said that, I can see a compromise in the future, too. Short of an environmental impact study, I will take you out of my ski boat and pull my wake surfer behind it. I also have three photos of real-time wake surfers to show you the impact. I'll take you on the boat, exactly like we set it up. I'll take it to the spot that we use, which is northwest of the island. We only wake surf northwest of the island, heading straight northwest and back. So to the southeast of the island is never impacted by my boat. That's all of Wildwood, that's all the way down to the boat ramp, and that's the complete other side. A wake travels from a boat, any boat, 45 degrees, approximately 45 degrees, out, stern, and away. We travel northwest of the island where the deep water is. None of that will impact anybody in Wildwood, anybody down toward the boat ramp, anybody on the other side of the lake. It's impossible for me to make my wake go backwards. There's plenty of water there for the wakeboard boats to use, but the only way for you to definitively understand it is come for a ride with me. I'll put somebody over on Bill Denny's property. I'll put somebody over in Wildwood, and we'll wait some weeknight when there's nobody out there, or a very few people out there. there, or a very few people out there. We'll drive that wakeboard down, uh, wakeboard boat down, we'll bring it back, and you can determine what your two spotters have told you on the other side of the lake. I think you'll be surprised. The photos I have, you don't need to see them. It's not even three foot behind the boat. Now, somebody made a couple of points about any motorboat, my boat specifically, if we all go out for a sunset cruise, and I drive that boat at six miles an hour, which is the no-wake zone speed, at six miles an hour, my boat will put a wake, a wake out that looks like a ferry boat. Until it comes up on a plane, which is what they call up on the step, any boat does that. You can load up any boat to max capacity, drive it at a slow speed, and you'll get a very annoying tremendous wake. Wake boarding, as somebody said, on my digital speedometer is set at nine miles an hour. There is no safer water sport that I can think of, or any water sport that goes nine miles. It's actually nine knots, so it's probably ten miles an hour, really, if you figure it out.
So, in conclusion?
In conclusion, um, yeah, I don't want to read this because I was channeling, uh, Charles West in the last sentence. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, Anne Marie Gildenzy. Do you have your letter? Do you want it? There you go.
Anne Marie Gildenzy. Hi, Anne Marie, this, I'm Anne Marie Gildenzy. I have property on Sunset Acres on Basin Lake. Hello, selectmen, Holmes, Dillon, and Morton, sorry if I didn't pronounce correctly. I'm reaching out to you to ask you to please support the ban of surfing waves on Basin Lake, and please support the prohibiting of vessels from taking on water ballast to submerge the stern. Basin Lake is simply a small, of, to support, uh, wake surfing. Being only two-hundred-and-seventy-five acres and having minimal area with depths greater than twenty-five feet is just not suitable. Even lakes that are much bigger than Basin Lake are in trouble of being ruined due to this new activity. All lakes in any state are in trouble. There already have been several residents affected by waves created by, from wakesurfing. People have been knocked over, docks, boats have been slammed together, kids fishing on docks bounced around, and that's just a few. Below, I have listed the bullet points I came across from my research, with no cartoons, of affected, affected wake surfing. Please read as it provides details on what will happen to our lake in a very short time. Per deep geologist, Basin Lake would last about eight to ten years before it's completely lost. That does not count for the years from now until then, in which we will start feeling the effects like algae blooms, loss of fish stock, and overrun with invasive weeds and plants. The BLA, the Basin Lake Association, and its residents have fought long and hard and continuous battle against invasive plants to keep our lake alive. This new battle, we will not win unless we have your support. I appreciate your attention in this matter, and I hope you see why wakesurfing needs to be banned as soon as possible. Otherwise, we will not have a lake any longer. The end economic impact to East Hattam will be devastating, in my opinion. And then, wakesurfing can harm the lake by causing invasive erosion. The next, the rest of my letter is basically just bullets that have been said, but there's some detail in here, and I'd appreciate it if you could read it. I just have one more statement. I know that, I, I understand why the people who want, who are against this ban, because they enjoy doing it. But there is a big difference with the engineering, from my research, the engineering design of a wake boat versus a regular ski boat, and that's the concern. Thank you very much.
She says she'll be watching via YouTube and has.
I'm watching.
You're not watching? Come on up.
Yeah, I'm gonna try. It's working, right? Okay. So, I have, I didn't plan to come here, but I have at my home, the deed to a property, lot number twenty-seven, on a certain map or plan entitled Sunset Acres at Basin Lake, June nineteen forty-seven. It was signed by my grandparents. That property location is now owned at the GOAT, by the GOATs. You heard from them. I currently do not live there, but my grandparents built that house, well, not that house, but the original house, um, from nothing. Four kids, they lived in Long Island, they spent summers here. I, by the time I was baby, I have pictures of me two years old. They had a first floor, thank God, because there were four, there were lots of us, and there was a little beach, and the GOATs actually, I was there the other day, it looks very familiar, but much nicer than my grandparents had. My uncle owned the property next to it, which is then torn down. My uncle died in October and had no will. My cousin lives in Seattle, she's dealing with another issue, but we've, we've been residents since forty-seven. Um, so, let's see. Oh, so my sister, so the second half was, my sister lives where wakeboarding is allowed, and both of her children love doing it. I've been out on their boat, um, I love watching them. I don't ever want to try it. Thank you that you, as an older person, maybe I should, but I don't want to. And their, their lake is kind of like the reservoir, where there's a big section and a little section. They're only allowed to wakeboard in the big section, like Mudus Reservoir. They've seen a lot of erosion on their property. I've noticed a lot of erosion. They've been on that lake, they call it a pond, since my sister's husband's parents were alive. They own three different properties, and they've seen a huge difference in the weeds. I've noticed a huge difference in the weeds on the shoreline. I'm very much opposed to wakeboarding. I'm very sorry. You know, I, I love watching it. They've stopped. They've stopped at least five or six years ago, and they're considering selling their property because of it. So, thank you for your time. You, you don't read my letter, right?
Kathy Hutchinson. My name is Kathy Hutchinson. My husband and I have lived on Basin in number twenty-one Wildwood for the past five years, and I have a much longer history on the lake. My grandfather started coming to Basin in the early nineteen twenties to fish and camp with his friends while the Wildwood property was owned by the Smith family. He was lucky to be able to rent a piece of that property, so my mom grew up coming to Basin every summer. By the time I was born, the Wildwood property had thirty-eight cottages on it, and I too grew up coming to the lake with my four siblings. Now, all of our children and grandchildren come as well. The lake has always been an important part of my family's life, and it's very concerning that we are now facing a possibility of the lake being destroyed by wakesurf boats. Basin Lake has always been known as one of the cleanest and clearest lakes in New England. In the past few years, I and everyone else around the lake have noticed a significant decrease in the clarity of the water, as well as an increase in the amount of weeds, vegetation floating and washing up on shore from the impact of the surf boats. In addition, the vegetation has hundreds of fish eggs attached to it that will now never hatch, fish that provide an important part of the ecosystem of the lake and the wildlife that lives around the lake. The BLA, which most residents on the lake are a member of and donate to, and the state of Connecticut have spent significant amount of money over the past twenty years to try to combat invasive weeds and keep our lake pristine. It is long, it's a long process involving not just financial resources, but long hours of research and work done by volunteers. All of the progress that they have now made is threatened to be destroyed. I'm not opposed to surf boats in general. I myself have surfed in the past, but on Lake Sabago in Maine and Lake Winnipesaukee in New Hampshire. These lakes are much larger and deeper than Basin Lake, which is the average depth is only fifteen and a half feet. I am sure that you have seen the videos of what happens to the bottom of a lake when a surfboard is used in less than twenty-five feet. The damage to the ecosystem, as well as the damage to resident docks and boats are astronomical. That is what is occurring on Basin Lake right now. Many of the surf boats come onto the lake via the state boat launch, but there are a few residents who own them as well. One resident in particular who is new to the lake has been asked many times to please only use the boat in the deepest part of the lake. Not only did he ignore the request, he purposely drove his boat as close to shore as possible to show everyone he could do as he pleases, no matter the consequences. It is this kind of selfish behavior that can only be stopped with an ordinance banning this type of activity. Thank you for taking the time to read this email. I hope that reading this, as well as all the other emails from residents on the lake, in addition to the, all the scientific information, you will prove, you will prove to you how important this issue is. Please help us save our lake and ban wake surf boats on Basin Lake. Sincerely, Kathy Hutchinson. Brent Borgnine. Last one. I know, right? You gotta be tired of hearing from me. Okay, last one. I am writing as an advocate to ban, what?
There's three more.
Oh, there's three more? Sorry, three more just came in. I am writing as an advocate to ban wave and wake boats on Basin Lake. My family has owned a cottage on the lake for nearly seventy years. We now have four generations that have lasting and happy memories of good times. The thought of those ending because of the ecosystem of the lake could be ruined by these boats is extremely disappointing. On behalf of the Borgnine family of One Forty Lakeside Drive, I urge you to ban wake and wave boats from our lake, which could include any from entering through the public boat launch. Thank you, Brent Borgnine. I don't have any more in my pile, though. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Ed Gubbins. I know he's not here.
Look, I'll be sure from the ag station.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Okay. He'll go after I'm done. Almost done. All right, um, this is real quick. Ed Gubbins from Smith Road wrote, "I am writing this email in agreement with the town to eliminate wakesurfing on our waterways and lakes in East Hattam. Our lakes are too small to accommodate this recreational activity. Wake surfing requires a towboat to generate a wave large enough to allow a person to surf on the wave without holding on to a tow rope. I am sure this is a fun activity, however, our small lakes, this creates a hazardous situation. The larger waves violently rock other boats on the water. The possibility of injury to a person enjoying a leisurely day on the water is real. The power required by the towboat to generate the enhanced wake does not, does real harm to the bottom of the lake. The large waves are also a danger to creating erosion and damage to the property around the lake. I urge the town to pass an ordinance against the wakesurfing and the boats that create enhanced wakes on our town waterways. I cannot attend the meeting tonight, but I wanted to voice my opposition to these enhanced wake issues." BK. Brian. Ring a bell?
Brian Katz.
Brian Katz?
Katz.
Katz? Not here, okay. Uh, let's see. Oh, there it is, okay. Um, "I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed ban of wakesurfing and wake boats on Basin Lake. Please let me begin by clarifying, I do not personally engage in the sport of wakesurfing, nor do I own a wake boat. However, as a lifelong water sports enthusiast and invested member of this community, I believe this ban is unwarranted and premature. I have reviewed data and studies concerning other lakes across the country, but there has been no evidence presented indicating that wakesurfing has caused measurable ecological damage to Basin Lake itself. Despite this lack of local evidence, a small group has continued to push a ban without broader input or scientific evaluation specific to our lake. As a resource, water resource engineer or hydrologist, conducted an evaluation of Basin Lake. Without such professional assessment, it's difficult to make an informed decision that accurately reflects the lake's conditions and vulnerabilities. Two, has there been any discussion about compromise, for example, allowing wakesurfing only in designated zones, such as down the center of the lake, where wake dispersion could be more manageable? To my knowledge, no such discussions have taken place. Additionally, I've heard claims that these boats create six-foot waves. This is simply false. In reality, these boats typically range from two to three feet, depending on the boat and conditions. Has there been any discussion about regulating the use of ballast or wake-enhancing devices rather than implementing a full ban? Again, it seems no such conversations have been held. This proposal sets a concerning precedent. If we move forward without evidence or compromise, where does this stop? Will tubing, water skiing, engine horsepower be next on the chopping block? I believe we all share a common goal, to preserve the health and enjoyment of Basin Lake for generations to come. But the path forward should be rooted in scientific evaluation, community input, and reasonable compromise, not reactionary regulation. Thank you for your time and consideration, sincerely, Brian." And then, we have one here from Steve Kozinski. Can we put it up on the screen? No. Didn't know to do that, so no. But I can.
So, I provided a map.
I don't know if you can see it, but.
That I used Google Maps to draw, measure, and did a lot of reading on this subject from many different sources that you've already talked about and quoted, and there were varying ideas and distances and depths and all that stuff included. I compiled those numbers and used them to basically use an average of all the numbers, and then added a little bit to that. The wind is a bigger factor than most waves created by any boat. That's what all those studies basically had said in every single one of them. So, I have a couple of copies of these with a key that goes with it, but there was a Google Earth document that would have been able to clip and show distances and areas that I've did. Basically, it just shows that from each end of the lake, you're not going to see it from here, Brooks's Cove end, I used a seven-hundred-foot distance pretty much everything. The lake itself is a mile and a half long from Brooks's Cove to the boat ramp, okay? I went from the Brownell Cottage at the tip of Brooks's Cove, and I went seven-hundred feet out. Then from one-fifty-four Smith Road, which is a big, like, gingerbread-style mansion-sized house that's on the lake. I went roughly, it's seven-hundred, the numbers are, I can leave them all here, they're seven-hundred and fourteen feet from the Brownell out in towards the middle of the lake. Seven-hundred and fifty-four feet from that one-fifty-four Smith Road, uh, from Two Fieldstone Drive, seven-hundred and forty-one feet to the center of the line. Then I went farther down, I went to Cottage Four in Wildwood, seven-hundred and four Smith Road, to an area in the lake of eight-hundred and twenty feet. Then I went from ninety-five Lakeside Drive on the Sunset Acres, eight-hundred and twelve feet out into the center. And the tip of the island that is occupied by a cottage, I went seven-hundred and four feet out towards the other end of the lake. I pinpointed all these on this map, and put a line in the red between all those points and just center of the lake. That line is, at that length with those measurements, thirty-one hundred feet long, in the center of the lake, seven-hundred feet at least from every shoreline. I went out with a laser measurer last night, I did all the measuring, I talked to the one boat, the group of kids that were in that boat last night that were actively surfing, on basically that line. And those waves, by the time they get to that shore, are not as big as everyone here is saying. So, this is a, if you all could see this up on a screen, you would, it would make way more sense. I can leave some copies here, you can look at them and read it with the stuff behind it. Um, I think this is a good compromise. You can put a buoy at each end of that line, like we have for the no-wake signs, and mark those as the line, and stay on that line. You can shrink it in a little bit if you won't want. The depth of that area, the ma, the median depth is twenty feet. In the middle of it, it's forty to fifty feet. All those numbers are way more than any of those studies really said. They're at ten feet, some are at fifty. Those numbers make no sense at the fifty feet, because the water, the thrust of that prop never reaches that far. So, this map, I'm, I can leave a couple up here, you guys can click through them. I sent this to the Board of Selectmen for them to go over. I sent it to Bill Denia. I don't know that it opens on anyone that doesn't have a Gmail account, but if anybody wants it, you can ask the board. I can give them an email, they can send an email to you, or they can give an email to me, and I can even send it to you. Obviously, I'm against banning any wakeboard or wakesurfing boats on Basin Lake.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I believe that's the end of our, in, um, letters that we received. Is there anybody who has anything different that they'd like to add, um, to tonight's, um, okay, sir? If you could come and use your outside voice nice and close to that mic, that would be great. And state your name and address.
My name is Jason Kavanaugh, Twenty-One Basin Road. A few weeks ago, it was raining, because there was only one wake boat out on the other side of the lake. We were at Sunset Acres, me and two kids fishing, and we could see the wave come in, they were smashing up over our swim docks, smashing our boats up onto the docks. That's one boat passing. No other boats on there. I have a video of the whole wave showing that one boat out there. So, all your studies and all your whatever, I saw it firsthand, and I have the video of it going over the swim docks. One boat out there.
Thank you. (applause)
Okay, can everyone hear me? Hi, good evening. My name is Kendra Saika, and I live at 20 Bailey Road. I'm currently studying industrial engineering at Purdue University, and I want to share some information on how other states are addressing. To start off, the overwhelming trend across the country is regulation, not prohibition. States are taking research-backed, measured approaches implementing distance and depth requirements to protect shorelines, reduce conflicts, and maintain access for all lake users. Here's what's happening across the U.S. In South Carolina, it requires wake surfers to maintain a 200-foot distance from shore. Tennessee follows the same 200-foot buffer but for lakes larger than 50 acres. In New Hampshire, the current legislation states that boats must remain 150 feet from shore. Lawmakers wanted to extend this, but were debating 200 or 300 feet. Ultimately, no conclusion was reached, and no legislation was passed, and the statute still is 150 feet. Maine enforces a 300-foot regulation for a 15-foot minimum distance. Minnesota and Vermont have one of the stricter policies with a 500-foot buffer and a 20-foot depth requirement. Let me emphasize: no one has banned wake surfing. Instead, they've passed enforceable rules that balance recreation with protection. They didn't act on misinformation, they acted on evidence and precedence. I think it is a responsibility of our respective governing bodies to mitigate risk. However, as I have displayed, the regulations put in place in other states have successfully mitigated risk, and the ordinance grows with an all-out ban is not needed. I think we should focus our attention on the real risk to our lake, which is hydrilla and irresponsible boating. These are the risks that will ultimately destroy our community, not wake surfing. I also think, one thing I want to mention, is we talked a lot about erosion close to shore, but I think it's a little hypocritical that we talk about that when, few bits in the Fourth of July, 50 boats are gonna gather, go in the shallowest part of our lake the entire time. Why are we not concerned about erosion, then? Why is it now that we've decided to pick up on this argument? If we really cared about erosion in the lake, we would come at it from all fronts, not specifically on this. How much time do I got? One second. All right. Throughout these letters, I've kinda took away three big issues: erosion, big waves, and weeds. First thing, erosion. Every boat in this lake is gonna cause erosion. We just need to mitigate risk the best we can. Banning a specific type of boat isn't gonna get rid of erosion. Big waves. This goes hand-in-hand with irresponsible boating. If we are in the center of the lake, I also see it firsthand. I'm on the boat. I see it from the shore. I see it on the boat. The waves do not reach at a 6-foot depth. They just don't. I can't explain it any better than just showing people. This goes, again, with the ordinances prepared. In conclusion, last thing is the weeds. We talked about the hydrilla. Every single boat that re-enters our river has the same amount of risk to carry hydrilla as a wake boat. And in fact, they talk about storing things in our ballast that weighs down the prop. When we put the boat up, when we take it on the trailer, we dump the ballast. So these arguments, like we don't put our boat up on the launch with a full ballast that would weigh down the prop and hit the ground. So these... In conclusion, there are many things we can do to help protect the ecosystem of our lake. I think we should do those things and focus on the real risk, and I thank you all for listening.
I'd like Mr. Greg Bugbee come up from the Connecticut Ag Station, please. One second.
Oh, wow. A scientist, but sometimes these types of things are a little difficult. Anyways, I'm with the Connecticut Ag Station. I'm the lead at the Office of Aquatic and Invasive Species, and I've worked on Basin Lake now since the 1990s, trying to keep the water clean and worked particularly on the invasive aquatic plants. I'm not gonna discuss, you know, leave the topic at hand so much as to just reiterate some of the things that have been said. I've surveyed hundreds upon hundreds of lakes in the state over my 40-year career, and Basin Lake is a true gem. It's one of the few really, really nice lakes, clear water. We've done a lot of work to keep the invasive plants under control, and we still have a lot of work to do. As we've mentioned, we found hydrilla last year in the lake. One concern about, I have anyway, about a boat that has ballast water is even though you drain it, you know, you do drain it, but you could still have propugils in there that maybe didn't get out, and maybe when you go to the next ramp and then you drain again, they might go out. Now, this, you know, this can happen with bait wells and everything else, not strictly with wake boats. But that is a concern when you have these sort of hidden places where invasive plant a propugilus can occur. The other thing which I think maybe got kinda lost is, in a lake, you have cold bottom water in the summer and warm top water. Then the cold bottom water tends to be low in oxygen, we find this in Basin Lake all the time, and very, very high in phosphorus. So if you try to avoid mixing the two layers, if you do, and this can happen naturally, it can happen, I'm sure, with boating and that sort of thing, but when you do get mixing that high phosphorus water that was in the bottom now mixes with the surface, then you get algal blooms, and that can cause some green water. So, you know, I'll answer questions afterwards if you have anything for me, but again, I just want to reiterate just what a really unusual lake you have for the state. If you saw some of the lakes that I go to, you would be shocked. And I love Basin Lake personally. I can take care of it. One of the reasons is that I love it so much. It's nice to be on a really nice lake. Anyways, I'm gonna stop there, and questions later, feel free to come and ask them. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Hi, I'm Stephen Cohen. Can you hear me okay? All right. Stephen Cohen, I live on Lakeview Road on the lower reservoir, and I want to start by saying how jealous I am that there's so much support for Basin and the reservoir. And the reservoir kind of, we really didn't show up in support of this as well as we should. I want to speak anecdotally and not to the science of any of this, because that's not my area, and I'm not gonna pretend to be a scientist. We live on the reservoir. We live with lakefront property. The last two years, the water has deteriorated to a point where it's almost not swimmable in portions of the lake. The wakes coming off of the wake boats, I'm sorry, I know there are people that want to do this, and they say otherwise, but the reservoir is only 11 feet deep at its deepest point. So the water that's coming in, you can't have 300-foot clearances to the shore and be down the middle, because the reservoir isn't that wide. And what happens is, with these people, even if they're doing it as best as they can, being courteous and respectful of the rules, the waves that are coming into the shore are unbelievable. They're hitting my beach, and in some cases, I'm getting 2-foot wakes coming onto my beach. It's a reservoir. So while this might be extreme banning it, and maybe there's a compromise, I think for the reservoir anyway, there's no solution. It's too shallow, and it's too narrow, and there's just no way to do it safely on that lake. We have water skiers, we have jet skis. Those guys go out, the waves that hit the shore are completely different. At best, we see a foot-tall wave. For the wake boats, we see a 2 feet and greater. It goes over my dock sometimes, and my dock is a foot and a half off the water. That's it. I'm done. That's all I wanted to say. Sorry.
When I flash the one minute, you don't have to stop. You have a full minute left.
Just saying.
Hi, my name is Calvin Gordick. I live at 20 Bailey Road. I give them the more information and details and to figure out those facts and silly data. I thank Bill and Environmental Protection, the fishing has been really good this year. Just want to thank you guys for that. I wake skate as well as surfing. I'm sure no one here even knows what that is. It's wakeboarding, but I'm wearing these shoes, and I'm not a fix to the board. I have a problem with Article 2, Chapter 171, Boating, Section 6b4. It's written really vague in the proposal, and it doesn't define wake surfing. I have concerns that wake skating will fall under that when we ride with no ballast. I mean, you can do it behind a jet ski. So I fear that the wording isn't different enough. I've attached more studies and reports detailing nationwide precedent on shoreline distances. I hope you guys consider that when you make your decision. I want to thank you guys for listening to our community, and I want to thank the community for coming. Have a good summer. Stay safe and stay cool.
Do you want to send us a copy of that?
Yeah, I will. I just received it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. My name is Jack Gordick, and I also live at 20 Bailey Road. I want to say I'm opposed to banning wake boats. I think staying active is one of the most important factors for long-term health and well-being. Water sports offer a fun and challenging way for people of all ages to stay physically active. Removing this option would limit how residents can maintain a healthy lifestyle. This ordinance would restrict residents' freedom to recreate responsibly. Many of us use the lake with respect. Rather than banning an entire category of recreation, we should be encouraging safe and considerate use for all. Other forms of lake recreation, like water skiing, aren't viable long-term options for everyone. Other wake sports are lower-impact, more accessible alternatives for people of different ages and skill levels. This ban would disproportionately affect those who these sports are the only suitable option. My friends and I hope to grow old here. We want to share the joy and challenge of water sports with future generations, just as past generations were able to do. as past generations were able to do. Remember that your role is to represent the entire lake community. We come from different backgrounds, different generations, and different ways of enjoying the lake. A blanket ban ignores this diversity. Thank you.
Oh, here comes somebody. While they're fighting.
While they're discussing. Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Dornfeld. I live at forty-two Old Kentwood Road in East Hattam. I'm a resident of the town. As you can see, I'm dressed up a little bit silly because I just came from the lake. I've been enjoying Upper and Lower Mudus Reservoir as well as Basin Lake now since 2017, when I began doing my favorite hobby, which is jet skiing. I know many of you don't like jet skis either, but that's all right. I do believe that this community could come together and form some kind of compromise. I am in opposition of the ban of wake surfing boats or wave-enhancing boats and devices. I apologize for not preparing something. I only just recently learned of this cause. I will say, in the past, I have donated to the Mudus Reservoir Preservation Group, which was to purchase an eco-harvester, which I was super excited for and couldn't wait for that thing to come around and start pulling weeds. We have seen a little bit of a lack of success from that device. It breaks down. It has a little bit of a lack of volunteers sometimes, and it does tend to not pull the roots up and completely remove the mill foil. But yeah, anyway, either way, you know, I love Mudus Reservoir, I love Basin Lake, and I definitely want to, you know, see it be clean and clear. And I definitely, you know, my... I understand if you've got a dock and you see boards lifting up or things splashing over your dock, that's super upsetting. I hope that everyone can operate their vessels responsibly and under the law, which is, you know, that you are responsible for your wake, and so that should be enforced. But yeah, I believe that we can reach some kind of compromise here because banning a certain device could definitely cause some gray areas and maybe a concern for policing and lack thereof, as we've already seen, some of you mentioned. And it could just agitate the community a little bit, and I'm just in support of, you know, trying to find a way around this. Please think of this as a problem that we're trying to solve. So instead of just thinking about wake surfing boats and wake-enhancing devices and wake surfing as an activity, please think of the problem and different ways that that problem can occur, such as wind, which is definitely the truth. I visit Long Pond and Cape Cod every summer, and almost every summer, the dock is gone from the winter, where there are no boats on the lake. It's the wind in the hurricane season. So, and every lake is surrounded by hills where there's plenty of water running down and causing corrosion. Some of my good friends own property on the lake, and I've seen their yard erode, and they are in a cove where there are no boats. And boat wakes do not approach that cove. It's too shallow for the energy to carry in. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other comments? Come on up.
Hi, Andy Wardick, twenty Bailey Road. Good evening. I don't support this ordinance for the ban on wake surfing. I've lived on the lake for four years now, and upon moving in, my neighbor Frank, God rest his soul, invited us to join the Basin Lake Association, which he supported for years. The BLI did some amazing work, built a great work to support the ecosystems, and I really appreciate Mr. Bugby coming in every year to assess it as well. But they don't resent me or the majority of the lake. The members of the board put this ordinance forward, and I don't agree with it. The decision was made without any input from other people, other members of the lake association, and my wife and I volunteered to help to come up with compromises early on, but we never had the chance to do that. Some of the proposals you heard is something we wanted to put forward, like three hundred feet away from the shore with a fifteen-foot depth, the same thing that Maine does. So we're not going to reinvent something, but take some precedence there. I've heard about the petition that went around as well, and I got to clarify some of the false, the inaccuracies that are there. There is not a wake boat around that can make a six-foot wave. There's nothing that's designed today that's fielded that can make a six-foot wave. So whatever they were telling them, and I know two people who have heard this, it's just not true. A boat that big could never fit in here, but there's not a boat that makes that wave right now. There's also some falsehoods going around about surfing caused Lake Pocatapog to become the way it is, and that's not true either. We talked about the runoff, and that's it, too. Most of the boats that are out there that do this are inboard, so just like a water ski boat, so it just has a straight shaft with a prop there. That's what ours has as well. And generally, what they do is they put something in the stream of the wave to disrupt one side so the other side can kind of come in a little bit clearer. There's been some terms out there that say there's jets shooting down. There are no jets shooting down. The only jets that shoot down in Basin Lake are people of the newer model C-dos that have what's called an IBR. It's the braking system, and when you hit the brake, it actually makes a funnel that does take your jet and shoot it straight down. All the boats, we talked about boats and their bows going up. We're really lucky with our boat because actually it's a trim plane that keeps the nose down so that that doesn't happen for our boat. So there's ways we can work this and keep it safe. There's an unintended consequence here, too. We talk about a lot about ballast boats. Everybody who has a Malibu boat that has a surf wedge will not be able to use that surf wedge anymore because of their wake-enhancing device. And I'll keep it short for that, too. They're putting out a form that says we can basically tell on our neighbors who are doing suspicious activity, and I don't think that's what East Hattam stands for. During my eleven years in the Navy, I saw a lot of nations that limited freedoms, and we take away those freedoms and rat out our neighbors, those things don't come back. The lake is also a state lake, and it's available to not just our town, but the entire state. While the boat launch is a little treacherous, it's still a state launch. Should the town attempt to ban this, there are likely going to be larger challenges that come from the state, just like yours in New Hampshire and other states. Is this a priority for our finances to tackle? Is this, with no evidence and any current environmental or health issues, should we be spending our time and money on this issue? Thanks.
Any other comments?
Hello, everyone. I'm Dave Shelberg. I'm the president of the Mudus Reservoir Preservation Group. I've listened to everyone here, and we also had a meeting. We decided that rather than to ban the boat, we wanted to put something in the paper to make people that have these boats understand what they're doing to the bodies of water that we're on. I'm not really here to speak. I'm here to support Basin Lake, but I'm here for Mudus Reservoir. We are a totally different body of water than Basin Lake. We don't have the depth of water. I think the deepest part of the Mudus Reservoir is nine feet, and it's for a very small area. And then it immediately rises up. So we could use our average to be somewhere, say, five feet. Now, I've listened to the boats and how the stern drops down, and then that does go on an angle. So if the back of the boat goes down, I mean, we could talk about inches, feet, whatever. We only have five feet of water. And at that water, we all know Mudus Reservoir has an abundance of weeds. And all that's going to happen is these weeds, we know with the harvester. We expected to be able to be able to pull these weeds up by the roots because of the bottom being so mucked. It didn't work out that way. Weeds survive. They just break off. So we're able to go and harvest the weeds, but we're just trimming the grass. That's all we're doing at this point. Okay? But we're managing to keep parts of the lake open that would normally be closed because of the weeds. But these, the wake boats, and we do have a couple, and it was cool to watch them go by, and you go, wow, look at that big wave. And the kids are like, wow, you know, these are great. The damage that I believe is happening to the bottom of the reservoir with the fish and all the, it is going to be dramatic. And as far as the clarity of the water, that's going to also be damaged. So I think it's important that Mudus Reservoir, the boat, we don't need any more damage. We've got enough damage. And what we're looking for are volunteers to help us to clean up the reservoir. So I think Mudus Reservoir Preservation Group is against the wake boats, unfortunately.
What about if I do this?
Perfect. That works.
All right. I am here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. Having learned in recent weeks that this is a sensitive subject for many, phrases like slippery slope, what's next, and we can't have fun in this town anymore have occurred, finger pointing has been done. Let me just say this. Anyone who believes that this is personal in any way could not be further from the truth. You're missing the entire point. Our only mission here is to save Basin Lake and Mudus Reservoir, I didn't forget you, from further problems. I've been visiting and living on Basin Lake for fifty-five years. I remember when there were no invasive weed problems. I realized that the state boat launch is wholly responsible for that. No one here is suggesting that wake boats are alone responsible, but they can contribute. I have witnessed firsthand the battle that has ensued to control that problem. Thousands of dollars and countless hours spent by a devoted few, whose only objective has been to maintain the health and beauty of our lakes. That will never end. It is a continuous problem that will require dedication and money and work. When we learned of the damage that wake-enhanced boats can possibly do to the lakebed environment, we realized that we needed to do something. I am not saying a compromise can't be reached, but it is as simple as that. No entitlement, no vendettas, no personal anything. Our lakes deserve to be preserved for future generations, as they have been for past generations. There are very few people who actually do the hard work. Everyone wants to enjoy the lake, but there are few volunteers. The harm caused by wake surf is irreparable. In as little as five to ten years, the lake could be practically unusable. No water sports, no fishing, no fun. It will be time for people to take their wake-enhanced boats to another location while the rest of us lose out. It saddens me that there are people who refuse to see this. It is a case of the desires of a few ruining the enjoyment of many. Kayakers, paddleboarders, swimmers, to name a few, are hindered by these boats. The bottom line is Basin Lake and Mudus Reservoir are simply too small and too shallow to handle this particular type of boat and sport. In conclusion, Basin Lake is a draw to many people from all over who love this lake. It is repeatedly used in real estate ads to bring people to live in East Hattam. Beautiful Basin Lake, one of the cleanest, nearest lakes in Connecticut, quote unquote. Please don't allow it to be ruined.
Can you say your name?
Roberta Denia.
Thank you, Roberta.
On Lakeside Drive.
Hi, I'm Mary Malus. Can you hear me? My family's been in Wildwood at seventy-four Smith Road for about sixty-five years, and I, again, I love what you said about it's not personal, it's just that we all love the lake. And often, it's not the size of the wake, but how it's made, it's that thrust of the propulsion system of a boat. And I wanted just to add a unique perspective after we've heard so many letters, that I had the opportunity to go scuba diving between the boat launch and the first island with the red house on it averages approximately eight to twelve feet. The visibility was fantastic. It was fifty to seventy feet. It was clear, beautiful, you know, there's schools of hundreds of little sunnies, and it's almost tropical. However, it's heartbreaking to see large tracts of the lake bottoms scored and cleared. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a specialist, but when you see that versus, most of it is habitat of sand and like low-lake weed scrub, but when you see that clear of the habitat, it's, again, it's heartbreaking. So I think that it's not a matter of when, like, having a time to do it or keeping it to a certain area, because then we can't get that message to people that are visiting the lake. Also, I wanted to communicate that maybe twenty years ago, we dove down to fifty-five feet, easy. And now in my depth gauge, I can't get past forty-eight and a half feet, no matter how much I circle around the deep spot. It's just sediment is silting in. And the third point is that I just wanted to recognize the work that the Basin Lake Association does to eliminate weeds, and it's a huge risk to have visitors to the lake come in with ballast tanks that could have invasive species. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Scott Jeszak. I've lived in the same house at eighty-nine Lakeside Drive since the late nineteen-fifties at Basin. And prior to that, I lived on a cottage on the waterfront over at Basin, excuse me, Mudus Reservoir, next to the Nathaniel Ackley House. Back in the nineteen-eighties, a lot of conservation efforts were started for the watershed at Basin Lake. I think I personally started it by purchasing and then donating to the East Hattam Land Trust, fifty-five acres on the shore of the Mudus Reservoir off of BB Road, over a mile of frontage. And that was done in fee and with easement, and that easement, as far as I know, is still the format that's used by the town of East Hattam in its conservation easements. Later on, in the nineteen-nineties, I think he's sitting in the front, I can't quite see that far, Jim Ventress, I had a piece of property over on Schulman Vasslock Road that I had bought from the Fishing and Game Club. And Jim, on behalf of the town, asked that I change the plan I have and donate half of that land or thirty acres that was in the watershed up above Ballahack Road to the town of East Hattam. And I did that also. And I think that shows the commitment that I have, but not only that, we now have nearly a thousand acres committed to either the town of East Hattam, the East Hattam Land Trust, or the state of Connecticut to protect both the Mudus Reservoir and Basin Lake. And that should be the objective and the decision that underwrites what we do here with the ordinance. I also want to make sure that I understand this, and I think I do, but I want to make sure we all understand it. And as there's no vote being taken place by our selectmen tonight, I think if there's a vote to be had, it will be whether or not this reaches the town meeting stage for a referendum, or, excuse me, maybe not town meeting, but referendum vote. Is that correct? Okay, so there will be a later selectmen's meeting to determine that. And that brings me to my last point. I've sat in at some of the meetings that you've had, the selectmen, and I heard Mr. Dill, I heard you say at one of those meetings that you would never support a ban on wake boats. Did I hear that correctly?
You absolutely did.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, and I respect your position, everybody's entitled to have one, except you are a member of the Board of Selectmen, and you came into this public hearing tonight without recusing yourself or standing aside, and came in with a predetermination on the issue, and I don't think that's fair. I think you should recuse yourself and allow the determination of whether this goes to referendum or not to be left to the remaining two selectmen.
Okay, okay. Everybody, please, let's be respectful. Thank you.
Steve Kazinsky, my son was the one that gave you the information about the feet along the, all across the lake.
Could you state your name?
This young lady, you're awesome for taking and doing that. My real question is, how do you plan on enforcing this?
There's been no determination of anything happening yet. We're just here to find out what you all think. Thank you.
How do you enforce the current ones that you have on there? In your boating regulations for the town?
Right now, when our police officers have a shift that they can get out on the lake with the lake boat, then they can enforce the laws that's presently in place.
Has anybody ever been fined two-hundred-and-fifty bucks for having a toilet on a boat?
I have no idea to the answer that question. Sorry.
How can we enforce? If I can read this, you know. The, on a pontoon boat, what is it called where everybody sits? The deck, where you stand? The deck? We have an ordinance that says you can't sit on a deck. But if you don't have seats, are you still allowed to?
Mr. Kazinsky, if you could just make your points, because people are waiting, I mean, to speak. Thank you.
The real issue to me is, I agree with a lot of things. We've got to protect the lake, that's fine. But the biggest issue I'll have is, how are you going to enforce this? People on the lake can say, hey, I saw a, what I think is a wake boat that went by. Are we going to stop people from trick skiing? Are we going to stop four fat guys from riding in the back of the boat that are going to create a wake? Is that, how are you going to enforce this?
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else? From the back of the room? Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tyler Leclair. I'm from seventy-four Smith Road, Wildwood. Been going down there my entire life. My grandparents grew up there, my parents grew up there. I hope someday my kids will grow up there as well. Some of the issues that I have with the ordinance now, it says, no person shall operate a motorboat in a manner that allows a person to wake surf on the waters of Basin Lake. Well, unfortunately, I hate to break it to you, that if any of your boats go twelve miles an hour, I can probably get back there and surf it. I've surfed on anything from a nineteen-eighty-seven Mastercraft ProStar, the standard professional ski boat. I've surfed on newer boats. I've surfed on my uncle's outboard boat. If you know what you're doing, you can surf pretty much anything. So what this ordinance is basically telling me is nobody's allowed to drive around and go twelve miles an hour. One of the big points made today was the invasive species, which I completely agree on. I have a background in environmental science, and invasive species are a big issue. That being said, fishing boats, one minute they're in the river, the next minute they're on our lake. They all have drywells. They all suck up water into their drywell, sit there overnight, they come back in the basin the next day, dumped into our lake. So if we're banning ballast systems that pump in water, we also need to look at fishing boats that are doing the same. Again, big waves, another big topic. Plenty of boats on the lake that I believe are too big for the lake. They go by my house, hundred, hundred-and-fifty feet from shore, doing, again, ten, twelve miles an hour, just plow and bow up, and it makes a big wave, and it comes crashing over our shore. But it's not just the wake boats doing that. You need to look at the bigger picture. I don't think any of us here want to ban boats entirely. So I just feel that it's unfair that targeting a small number of boats. That's about all I've got for you. Thank you for hearing me out.
Hi there, I'm Kyle Becker from Long Cove Road. I'm not here to necessarily support nor argue against the ordinance. I actually have similar thoughts as Tyler right before me. So the root of argument that people have for passing this proposed ordinance is centered on wakes, wake modifiers, ballast, concern for ecosystem, weeds in the shoreline, not the actual sport of wake surfing itself. The sport is essentially just a wakeboard with no bindings and a shorter rope. The surfboard itself isn't concerning the individuals who are pro ordinance. At our home, we do have one of those small ski boats, which Mr. Denia mentioned, and which was mentioned in the first presentation, that are intentionally designed to have as small a wake as possible. We still enjoy surfing off our ski boat frequently, and feel that banning all wake surfing is not in line with the goal of the proposed ordinance and a number of the other concerns listed tonight. The other day, I even saw someone getting towed on a surfboard behind a little whaler, which just kind of shows that. So if you do end up passing the ordinance, we ask that you alter the language to consider this, as I feel banning all small surfboards is not actually a part of solving any of the issues residents care about. Thank you.
Can I ask you, or get up to the mic and start over? Because I didn't hear what you said. I heard you talking, but I couldn't hear anything. Thank you.
Thank you for arranging this meeting for everyone tonight. We've heard both sides.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name?
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Lindner. I live on Oak Road off the Mudus Reservoir. You might recognize my name. I wrote an article that was published in the East Hattam newspaper, the weekly paper. Anyway, we've heard from both sides here. We've heard from people who are wake surfing enthusiasts, and they sound like considerate, sensible people. My point here today is I brought some pictures I downloaded. I'm going to leave it with you folks, and I would invite everyone to Google "wake boat manufacturers" and see what they're producing nowadays. We have public boat launches on both our lakes, and we can't exclude anybody in particular from those boat launches. And I'm going to give you these pictures now. I would again invite everyone to Google "wake boat manufacturers" and see what they're producing. These boats that they're coming out with and they're trying to sell, they make much bigger waves than anybody's talking about here. And people will buy them, and people will bring them to our lakes. And I implore you, please, don't kick this can down the road. We have to come up with a solution.
Anyone else want to come up? Anybody else before we have somebody speak for a second time? We got one in the back, Bill, sorry.
My name is Fred Dowzer from West Cove Road. Can everyone hear me? So I've lived on the lake for just about twenty-five years, lakefront property, and we've had erosion has been a problem the whole time we've been living in town. All, as I think we've already been discussing, all boats make waves. Wake boats obviously do, ski boats. We have people that barefoot ski on the lake. The faster you go, the more powerful the wakes are. We have pontoon boats that go, you know, closer to shore. If you have closer to shore, it'd be, you know, under nine, seven or nine miles per hour. When you're going close, you know, around nine miles per hour, you're not up on wakes, so you have a bigger wake. If you're going two or three, you have no wake behind you, but as you get to six, seven, eight, nine miles per hour, you're kind of, your back end of the boat is plowing through, so you're creating a bigger wake. But closer to shore, where it's very shallow, they do as much destruction when they do that than they do as a wake boat. When you talk about safety, you know, wake surfing, I don't wake surf myself, but you know, wake surfing is a very safe sport to do. We have people that have had jet ski accidents. I think we've had a death on Mudus Reservoir many years ago. We've had a plane crash in Mudus Reservoir, so if you're talking about safety, wake surfing is very safe, you know. So I just want to talk about, in conclusion... So I just want to talk about, in conclusion, you know, if we're going to talk about a ban, I'd like to think about other things, you know, if we decide not to allow, you know, ballast boats to come into our lake, or we could talk about the size of a boat, you know, limit the size. You know, some of the boats that you were talking about, that these manufacturers are making here are 26, 28, 30 feet. We're not talking about that, we're talking about 21, 22 foot boats on our lake, which don't have those massive wakes, so, thank you. And that's probably the end.
Thank you very much. Anybody else before somebody gets up to speak a second time?
We have one email that I will just read very quickly. It's very short. It is from Carol Martin, 166 Falls Road, Mudus. I live on Lower Mudus Reservoir, across from Nichols Field. An hour ago, there were three people on jet skis zooming back and forth and jumping over each other's wake in front of my house. This lasted for about a half an hour. Will this type of birding be stopped with this ordinance? Thank you.
Okay. Bill, you're up.
Yes, hon, okay. Thank you, I want to thank you all for coming, I want to thank you for the support of this ordinance. We have 150 signatures for the support of the ordinance that were given to the selectmen that gruel through this process, and I want to thank you all so. So thank you all for coming. Irene, thank you. Linda, thank you. Anya, and Eric. Thank you all.
Okay, you're welcome. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? I appreciate the thank yous. All right, just so you all know, we're obviously collecting all this information. We generally have a general sense of the, you know, the thing back and forth. If our next, our next Board of Selectmen meeting is July 16th? 16th, 17th? So anyways, we'll get the date for you. We're going, 16? Okay, 16. July 16th is our next Board of Selectmen meeting. We will take into account everything that was said here tonight. At that meeting, we will have a conversation, a discussion about what we all think collectively together as to what the next step might be. We're not necessarily going to vote on an ordinance on that meeting, we might, we might not, but the point being is, is that it's up for discussion, and I think there was a lot of things that were presented here tonight. We may invite some people to put together a working group to ask some questions. You know, I don't want 100 people in the room and asking you all questions, then having 100 answers. You know, I might have Mr. Buckby show up, and maybe a wakeboarder and a non-wakeboarder, whatever, I don't know. But I'm just saying that I think the discussion needs to be had. I think there's questions, I certainly have further questions to ask about all of this. I think there was enough conversation on both sides to think about this and be a little bit more considered, you know, consider all counts here. And I just want to do this right. And ultimately, it is not our vote. The only vote we have is to send it to a town meeting where you all vote. So I can tell you for sure, I can't tell you for sure that that's going to happen, I imagine it will, but I'm just saying that it's not our, it will not be our choice to put an ordinance in place. If an ordinance comes in front of the town, it automatically goes to a town meeting. So that's what will happen, should that ordinance go to the town meeting. So just so you all know, so it's not us, you don't have to convince us, but I do have some core questions, and I will assure you that I will be asking those questions at our next Board of Selectmen meeting. So nothing's going to happen unfortunately right away. I know some people were asking, can we get this done immediately? I don't think that we should do that. I think we need to do the right thing by our town and by all townspeople and all people who enjoy this lake, to make sure that we do the best job we can do to figure this out. So I do have more questions, and I am going to ask those, and we'll be asking those at that time. So again, thank you so much. It's very late. Go home. Hopefully it's cooled off now, and you can all sleep well. Thank you. And don't forget, July 22nd, budget referendum, come out and vote.
Hi, sweetie. It was really nice to meet you.
It was nice for you to be here. Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, are you healthy? Have you not, anything broken at the moment? Are you being careful out there?